One, two, mic check.
Mic check.
One, two, mic check. One, two, mic check. One, two, mic check.
Yes, yes, we might have a little delay today.
That's okay, because Tracey's gonna be late anyway, so if you delay that, it's fine.
That is perfect, then.
Yep, okay. Hi, how are you tonight?
We don't have full sound yet in both.
Okay, good.
Relax. Do you want to say something? Well, I offered it to her, but she just ignored me.
No, it's not the mics, they're having trouble with the feeds in there. He said about five minutes.
These are yours, too. For the last.
It's ready now? Okay. Welcome all of you to the August 2nd meeting of the Planning Commission. And I would like to take this opportunity to say job well done to our town and ask that Mary Stevenson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Present.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Present.
Chair Kissner?
Present. This is public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on any matters not described on this agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Are there any public comment?
Hi, I'm Mary Stevenson, 2683 Chibley Court, and a property owner on Monte Vista. And I'd like to bring to your attention a request that I've made for the last three years to rezone the, all the properties on Monte Vista from medium density to high density. This is the, in the 1990, the general plan from 1993, this street was mislabeled as medium density. There's 11 buildings on this street, 62 apartment units in those buildings. And I've been sending emails to various people, including some of the people on the diets for the last couple of years. In the last couple of months, I've had some really good discussions with Victor, who's been very informative and respectful and helpful in looking at this. But the decision that staff made was that this should not be rezoned high density. And I find that interesting at best, because it was built as high density, it remains high density, and it should be high density in the future. And it brings up a problem that I think that also needs to be addressed, and that is that, like the low-medium density recommendation and the recommendation not to rezone Monte Vista to high density, even though it's got an average of 19 units per acre. 16 units is the most you can have in medium density. These are all based on, what I've heard is that based on the council stated goal that we need to preserve our neighborhoods. And I'd like to see this group and the council address exactly what that means. What does it mean to preserve the neighborhoods of St. Helena? Does it mean to build, to craft small houses and build large houses? Does it mean to eliminate the land that could be made into small infill rental units? I think there needs to be a better definition of that, because I think there's a crosswires between what we need to have, what we want to have, and the recommendations that we're getting. So I request that this body look at Monte Vista and consider rezoning those 11 properties as high density, which would fit the unit count that they have right now. And I also request that this body put on the agenda to discuss what exactly it means to preserve the neighborhoods of St. Helena. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. The consent items, the mission, members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purpose of considering alternative action for extended discussion or public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. Consent items, and what we are considering is the approval of the minutes for July the 19th.
I have a comment on the minutes.
I need to say something about the minutes. Hold on, pull them in. Shall I go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay. On the last page, the motion, it says that I moved that the Planning Commission review and provide report and appeal package and take action on the requested appeal. The motion that I recall making was to uphold, uphold?
To grant the appeal.
To grant the appeal. So that is not the motion I made, that's my memory, and I'm assuming that there's someone else on the Planning Commission that remembers that way. So I'd like that to be changed to reflect what the actual motion was. Thank you. And having said that, does anyone else want to?
Well, this isn't important, but if you have to correct the minutes, could you correct the spelling of my name?
Thank you. Sure, I'll look over it.
Several times I have more syllables than I actually do.
So I moved that we accept the minutes as amended. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Obstand, I was absent.
Chair Kissner?
Yes. Next item is public hearings. Demolition permit and design review for 1695 Chardonnay Way.
May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kissner. The applicant is seeking demolition permit and design review approval to demolish the existing 1,879 square foot, single-story, single-family residence with a 484 square foot attached garage in order to construct a new 2,763 square foot, one and a half story, single-family residence with a 400 square foot detached second unit and 277 square foot attached garage. The proposed home includes a 391 square foot loft above the kitchen that would be accessed via a ladder. While the garage has the footprint of a one-car garage, the applicant's proposing a lift system so that they can garage two cars if so desired. As stated on the plans, a new home would be finished with stucco over ICF block walls, which is more energy efficient than traditional wood framing. All roofing would be standing seam, galvanized metal. Windows and doors would be constructed recessed wood with metal cladding. The existing home is approximately 16 feet in height, and the height of the proposed home is approximately 21 and a half feet to the top of ridge, which is approximately five and a half feet taller than the existing home. As far as floor area ratio is concerned, with the FAR exemptions noted in the staff report, the project would consist of 2,840 square feet, which is approximately 447 square feet less than the maximum square footage permitted for FAR of .26. The project as proposed meets all the requirements of the LR zone, including lot coverage, building size, height setbacks, et cetera. As far as the demolition permit is concerned, the home was constructed in 1980, and it's not listed on the city of St. Helena's historical resource inventory. Demolition of this residence and associated structures would not impact a historical resource or otherwise negatively affect the character of the neighborhood. As discussed in the staff report, while the proposed project may be somewhat larger than other homes in the immediately surrounding neighborhood, this project is unique for several reasons. It is right on Spring Street, is not located in an older historic neighborhood. A cemetery is on the opposite side of Spring Street. The rear property abuts the church driveway and parking lot, and it's on a corner lot requiring two 20-foot setbacks with one immediately adjacent residential neighbor. Staff has received numerous comments on the project since publication of the agenda, which have been provided to the commission and are on the table in the back. These comments generally question the demolition of the home, the size of the proposed new home, and whether or not the project violates established CCNRs with respect to a second unit. As noted in the staff report, the CCNRs are not city regulations, and the city does not enforce or otherwise regulate CCNRs. The home and second unit are permitted uses in the LR district, and demolition and design review are before the commission this evening. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, 15303, and accept or reject the required findings and approve, modify, or deny the proposed demolition permit and design review to allow the proposed project at 1695 Chardonnay Way. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Anyone have any questions to staff?
Yeah, I do, this is kind of a general question. What is, how many feet in a story? I mean?
That can vary greatly, I mean, I would say 10 to 12.
So five and a half feet might be a half a story, so it would be one and a half story. I mean, is that?
It could be.
Okay, thanks. Let's, I don't want to clarify.
Any other questions, Mary?
No, I don't have a question, I have disclosure.
Oh, Mary has the disclosure, go ahead.
Yeah. I live in this neighborhood, but not within 500 feet of the subject property, so I believe I'm still entitled to discuss and vote on the issue. I do want to disclose that the first time this was scheduled to be on the agenda, I was contacted by a neighbor to ask if I had a copy of the CCNRs, because at that time I was known to be one of the newer people in the neighborhood and perhaps had a copy that pertained to this particular lot. The project was developed in several phases, and the CCNRs were recorded by units. I do happen to be in this unit, I provided a copy to the staff and to the neighbors as well. When I found out, I guess a week ago, that this was going to be on the agenda again, I did just email those two neighbors to tell them that it was coming up on the agenda, and I did not have a packet yet. But I'd been told that it was a one-story house that maximized floor area. Subsequent to that, I got some questions about the CCNRs. I clarified the difference between a guest house, which does not have cooking facilities, and a second unit, which does have cooking facilities. And we had some back and forth about the height. Just looking at the CCNRs, it says one story or split level. And that's it, but I did want people to know I'd had those conversations with people.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to speak, please?
My name is Dan Schoenfeld, I'm the owner of the property at 1695 Chardonnay. And I just wanted to bring a few points to bear. I think you've talked about the fact that it's one and a half stories, essentially it's one story with a loft inside. And there's a ladder that actually goes from the lower story to the upper story, to the upper area, I should say, not story, but to the loft. Pardon me. There is no room for a staircase down below, so there's no chance that this would ever be a two-story house. There's an area down below, a gathering room, that if we were to ever try to put a staircase in, would completely destroy that area, so that's, I think that's significant. Essentially, what I'm saying is, is that there's no way that this could ever become a two-story home in the future. We're just putting a loft up there, it's a loft that could be for music, or for, you know, kids gathering, or whatever, there's a ladder, you see it on your, you know, the brochure that I gave you. Then, let's see, I wanted to mention that we have tried to keep underneath all the maximum guidelines by at least 15%, 13 to 15% on everything, our FARs, our, you know, the height of the house, the square footage on the lot, everything is about 15% less than what the maximum is. We've gone through three different revisions to make this happen, and now, you know, we're at this point. The house is actually 55 and a half feet in width, it's actually a foot and a half less in width than the existing house that's there right now. People have asked me, why don't you consider remodeling, why don't you consider, you know, doing something different, why don't you just, you know, add on to the house, or whatever? But the kind of technology that we are involved in is sort of like the Tesla of the house building industry, it's the most energy efficient home that's ever been built. I have done stick homes up till this point, now I'm doing only this type of ICF poured in place home. There's absolutely, virtually no noise, not 100%, but almost no noise when these are being built, because basically there's no pounding of nails inside or out, and once the house, the basic house is constructed inside, it's, you know, there's a lot of stuff that happens that would be, could be noisy in some other areas, but in, all we're doing is, we're not putting in sheet rock, we're actually just putting in plaster over walls. Outside, we're just making one, the noisiest time is when we do one pour, and that's about a day, and every time thereafter, it's virtually very quiet. But anyway, the point is, is that what we have is a technology that's so far in excess of anything that's out there at this point, that I really feel that, I just cannot go back to either remodeling a normal house, or a stick house, or building a wood house, and that's why, you know, we don't want to leave the house that's there, there, because this house, the technology of this is so far in excess. They're fireproof, termite proof, earthquake proof, 85% energy reduction over wood, they last for 1,000 years, they're built phenomenally well, and there's just nothing like it out there. There's, they've been out for many, many years, but not on the West Coast. So that's, and we're bringing that technology here to St. Helena, so I'm very excited about that as well. Other than that, I just wanted to say that we want to certainly have any kind of conversations with the neighbors that we can, anybody that has any issues or concerns, we're more than happy to talk to them, to try to work out whatever it is that we're trying to do. As far as the additional unit in front, I wanted to say that the reason that we would like the neighbors to at least consider that, and I understand that it's, there have not been second units in the neighborhood at any time, and that it is not in the CCNRs, that, you know, basically the CCNRs were written in 1977, and back then, the need for these types of units were not apparent at that time. And now, because of the cost of housing being what it is, in-law units are really hard to come by, and they serve a huge need for elderly people, for, you know, that need a second unit for in-laws, people, you know, who just can't afford that type of housing. And basically, what we're attempting to do is still within the confines of the regulations of, but we do want to do it in a way that's tasteful and attractive, and that meets with all the qualifications we can have it met with, so. And I think that the cities and the states are in favor of these sorts of things, because they have an FAR exemption for this, they're tending to encourage these types of units in neighborhoods. So I think that's a positive, that they do want to try to promote those types of units. So with that said, that's what I would appeal to in talking with the neighbors about this. So other than that, I think that pretty much covers, just to say that we've tried to design this in such a way that we have no windows facing the neighbors, and we're doing everything we can to try to make it as little in bulk and as little over mass as possible, and trying to meet every qualification we can to come in underneath the qualifications that the city is requiring of us. So I don't really have much more to add to that at this point, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions of the applicant?
What are these, what are these houses called? I mean, what is the, how do I identify what you're talking about?
Sure, they're ICF, Interlocking Concrete Forms, ICF. They've been out for, actually, the Burj Dubai in Dubai is all concrete, it's the tallest building in the world, it's all 100% concrete. 6% of the world's building is done, it's the most used building material in the world, but not in the United States. In the United States, it's a very small fragment, I think because the wood industry has quite a lock on people. But now that they're being built, people are realizing that, gee, in a fire, these things are absolutely incombustible. They have four-hour firewalls, stick homes have one-hour firewalls, if that. They go up in flames just like that in seven minutes. Our homes, we have pictures of homes in the San Diego Fire that withstood the fires, where everything else around them got burned down. In earthquakes, they're much better, they survive earthquakes, they've survived Hurricane Sandy, where everything around Hurricane Sandy got destroyed. The ICF homes, we've got pictures, we've got a video of where the home actually stood up in a hurricane, in 180 mile an hour winds, when all the other buildings that have been there for years and years and years got destroyed. The homes are just virtually indestructible, and there's no mold, there's no mildew, and they exceed LEED platinum already, 2020 codes are already exceeded. We're coming in 40% higher than the Title 24 requirements, which is pretty amazing, but we are, and there's no wood home that can possibly compete with that, it's not even close. But the fire is really a big thing. There's a, there was a fire over in Washington State, where actually a guy had an all-concrete home, and it destroyed everything around him. He went inside of his home, and he was cool inside of his home, while his home was engulfed in flames, when he came back out, there wasn't a scintilla of damage to his home, and you can look it up online, it's amazing. That would never happen with a wood home, it would be destroyed in seven minutes, as you see in Lake County. So we want to put these homes out, we want to, we want everybody, you know, we're not here to, we're not here to just build homes and just leave the, you know, leave and try to make the most amount of money possible. I'm here because I really truly believe in what we're doing, and I really truly believe that St. Helena needs these types, this type of housing, especially with the fire and the earthquake danger that's here. You wouldn't have those problems with these homes, our fire insurance premiums, once people understand, in other parts of the country are less, the liability is less, everything is, you know, built so well that they're built to last 1,000 years, there's no maintenance on these. If we go out and we build one of these homes, and we leave it right in the middle, we can come back in six months, and this happened in Napa, come back in six months and there isn't a scintilla of damage to this home, not, nothing. If it was a wood home, it would be destroyed, it would be, it would... It would be, it would have rotted, termites, mold, mildew, all those types of things. We don't have mold or mildew in our homes. We don't have sheet rock in our homes. We don't have the kinds of things that come airborne diseases that come into your home that come in from wood, from mold and mildew. We don't have mold and mildew in our homes. If there is a flood in our homes, you come and wipe off the homes. You don't have black mold and mildew that you have to pay twenty thousand dollars, like I did, where my fire insurance company wouldn't, my insurance company wouldn't handle it. So they just, you know, it's just kind of like, we like to think of ourselves as the Tesla of housing, and I think we can prove it to you if we're given a chance. And we want to make, we want to make this group here proud of what they've got in the corner, that when they see these homes, they're going to be just so amazed. They're going to say, jeez, this is, this is the way, this is two thousand sixteen. It's the future, but the future is now. So, and I did just want to add one thing without being too verbose about this, but that these have been out for a number of years. Our technology has been out for twenty years, just our company has been around for twenty years. They've built hotels, they've built senior citizens facilities. They've built them all over the country, in different parts in the East Coast, where when it gets to be thirty degrees or twenty degrees, you don't even have to turn on the heater very barely. When it gets to be a hundred degrees, you don't have to turn on the air conditioner very barely, because the homes are so well insulated. They're just amazing. The walls are R-52, the ceilings are R-70. In a standard wood home, you're getting about an R-30 in the walls, if you're lucky, maybe an R-19, R-30. But we're R-54. In the ceilings, you're getting R-30, and we're R-70. And the interior walls in between the rooms are basically so soundproof that you can't really hear people from one room to the next. And the walls are so well insulated that you don't hear people upstairs. And that's, in every, in the hotels that they built, that's what people say. It's just amazing. If you've got noise on the street, you don't hear the noise. It's, they're really phenomenal homes.
Can I ask a different question?
Yep.
All those benefits sound fabulous, but it doesn't seem to have any variance on the size of the home. So you'll get all those in a different-sized home. It's really the building technology. So can you speak to why you feel it's important to have the loft and to push the guidelines that are already built into the CCNRs, which again, don't address building materials? I mean, that sounds fantastic, but speak back to what the neighbors' concerns are, which is really massive, the house.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, and in fact, I was going through the code for the neighborhood CCNRs, and it did say that split levels are acceptable. So we're not, we did everything we could not to build a second level. And so we're just adding on this level up above. It's because of our costs in trying to build these things, you know, we have to build a certain square footage to be able to make it work. But being sensitive to the neighbors and the bulk and the mass, I'm well aware, you know, that they don't want McMansions, and that's why we spent three different times, we, on three different occasions, we went over and over and over again to try to figure out, how do we, how do we cut this out? How do we make it look less bulky? Our width, again, is less than it was before. Or, you know, we've cut the garage to where we could make it work, but the square footage is an important thing, and so we've cut it back fifteen percent, in any case, trying to, you know, make it as complicit with the neighbors as possible. But that's just, you know, in order for us to be able to make it work financially, that's the only way we can do it.
Is the second unit also built in the same, with the same?
Material?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The whole, the whole house is, the whole house is this building system. And to get to that point about why, why are we, you know, not keeping the house that's there again? I just, I absolutely will never build again the same way that I built before, and I'm doing other projects in other areas, and they're all this technology. So, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. We have a number of exhibits about FAR that you prepared.
Right.
I'm curious about the methodology of those. I'm one who's known to go look at the assessor's website and look up lot sizes.
Sure.
And look up floor areas, and run my own calculations. To calculate the floor area, did you just look at the total area under roof?
My civil engineer put those together, and I do not know exactly what. I believe that what he did, and I'm, I want to, I don't want to speak out of term, but what he did is he went ahead and I believe included all the buildings, all the, you know, that there's a garage and all that on the property. So in all fairness to the FAR that you see there, I mean, I know that back when they built these homes, they probably didn't have the same standards, where there were exemptions that we, that we're getting. So, you know, we are certainly, you know, more square footage perhaps than, you know, what, because we've got a garage that's exempt.
Okay. Just as a point, in fact, I think that what your civil engineer did, possibly, is that he did not allow exemptions that exist for the existing homes, because they have garages, which reduces the floor area that they have for zoning purposes. So what you've given us, to me, is comparing apples to oranges. Just to give you an example, you gave us some figures for 1655 Chardonnay, where you have a floor area of twenty, two thousand five hundred four square feet. By the assessor's calculations, when you apply the exemption for the garage, it's two thousand forty-eight. A similar, significant variance at 2591 Pinoway. Your number was three thousand one hundred seventy-four. Using the assessor's calculation, it's two thousand three hundred eighty-three. And I don't want to go through every calculation. My point is, I don't give your exhibits a lot of weight, because the methodology hasn't been explained, and I believe some important factors were left out. My second question is, goes, follow up on what Commissioner Sweeney asked. Is it fair to say that if you didn't put the loft in, you would reduce the height of this home?
If we didn't put the loft in, would we reduce the height of the home?
Yes.
The home is, right now, it's twenty-one and a half feet.
Right.
If we didn't have the loft in, we probably wouldn't reduce it that much, only because of the, Kevin, I think you can kind of speak to this a little bit, yeah?
Yeah, the volume in the gathering room. We wanted the high windows to get light into the room, because we have that cover outside. So that was the whole reason. It's a sixteen-foot plate line. Two-story plate lines are twenty feet.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Yeah, Kevin O'Brien, the architect.
So you're talking about, when I look at the rear elevation, you have windows over the gathering space?
Correct. And if you have one of the views of the loft, you can see the high windows in the gathering room.
Okay. Well, I would merely point out, there are some homes in the neighborhood that may have a little cupola structure, or something like that, on the roof to let extra light in. But to my knowledge, nothing goes to this height, and not for this purpose. And I, I don't want to be critical of your design, but I think that's a little bit inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. I want to ask about the garage. In your letter, you admit it's not typical, and you call it a creative solution in order to meet FAR and lot coverage. I question its functionality for an everyday family that lives here. Do they really want to have to pull in and put one, do a lift and get one car on top of the other? Or is the everyday family not your target market? I mean, why would you, why would you design a garage like this?
No, our everyday, the everyday family is our market. We just had a certain limited amount of room to be able to do, you know, what we're trying to do, and still make it work. I've done lifts, and they work great. I mean, they're very, very functional. But we're not targeting, you know, just second-home buyers. We're targeting whoever, you know, is out there, and hopefully, a family, you know, that would end up buying this home.
So do you have a client for this house, or purchaser?
No.
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 Okay. I'd like to ask you, what kind of due diligence you did before you purchased the property? Were you aware of the covenants at the time you closed on the lot?
No, I have to be honest with you that I did not spend a great deal of time on covenants and restrictions. I was trying to determine what I could do based on the, you know, the rules and regulations that are inherent in the city's planning code, and basically went with that.
And what would your, what would your definition be of a split-level home?
Of a split-level home?
Yes.
Well, in this case, I mean, basically, we're looking at, you know, the story below, and then this somewhat elevated area up above. Our ceiling height up above is only eight and a half feet, and on the sides, it's only six feet. So it's, and it's contained within the total structure that's there right now. So we're not like, you know, creating a structure that's a certain height, and then it goes up another eight feet from there. It's all embodied in the large, you know, feeling inside. And it's a fact that, you know, people are seeking to have homes that have, you know, somewhat higher ceilings these days.
Okay.
And you see a lot of that in St. Helena.
Yeah, I tend to disagree a little bit, and given when these covenants were written, we always run into problems of not having enough definitions, or clear definitions. But at least in my experience, when I grew up, the split-level home was the home that you walked in the front door, and you had stairways that took you up or took you down.
Right.
Everything was connected by stairways. I was just wondering what you thought that was.
Yeah.
That's it. I don't have any other questions.
Well, I had a question about the garage, too.
Yeah.
Now, is the garage also made from this prefab, well, from the concrete?
Yes, it is.
Because I was concerned about the noise. If, in fact, people were using it every day, that lift is going to be a motor, and it's going to be noisy. So what can you tell me about that?
From the inside of the garage?
Wherever. I don't know where the motor will be. I don't know if there'll be windows. I don't know. I'm just, that's a concern of mine.
Oh, you mean, you're talking about, you're not talking about the garage door? You mean the lift inside?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, right, absolutely quiet. I mean, you won't hear it at all. I mean, the walls are thirteen inches thick. It's the quietest, you know.
And there won't be window, there won't be windows in there?
Well, there will be windows, but they'll be probably dual to triple insulated. I mean, they're going to be very thick windows. We don't want to have a, you know, quiet home without quiet windows.
I'm just, I'm sorry, this is my last question, but how big a motor is that lifts a car? I don't know what that would even be. So what are we talking about in terms of what kind of a motor? Is it, is it an electric motor? Is it a what?
You know, we haven't chosen it yet. I did one in another location, and I'd have to go back and see what it is, but I don't believe it's that big. But they're adequate to move a car. And a lot of people, by the way, do use that upper level for storage of a lot of different things. So, you know, as another option.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'd like to open a public forum now, please, Public Comics, excuse me.
Good evening, Chairman Kissner, members of the commission and staff. My name is Donna Oldford. I live at 2620 Pinoway in the Sylvaner subdivision, and have lived there for about twenty-seven years now. Most of you have seen me in my capacity as a planning consultant, and so you know too well that when I take you out to take a look at a project or talk to you about it, the first thing you ask me is, so how are you with the neighbors? And it's important to meet with the neighbors. I think that that is one thing that's missing here, that needs to occur, because we bought houses in this neighborhood because it was of a particular character. Those CCNRs have served us really well for over thirty years. The intent of the CCNRs was to create single-family housing for St. Helena families, or any other families coming in, where we would have a low intensity of development, a peaceful life. We would have privacy in our backyards without a second unit or a two-story unit looking into our backyards. We hold this very dear in the Sylvaner subdivision. So I think that, I'm here tonight to ask you to not approve this proposal tonight for two reasons. The most important reason is that it violates some very strict tenants of our CCNRs. Number one, the CCNRs do not allow second stories. And you can call it a loft, or you can call it upstairs or downstairs, but a second unit is a second unit. When the CCNRs say that split-level units are allowed, typically, the units in Sylvaner with more than one story, more than one-story sort of ranch-style homes are located to the perimeter. And the importance of that was that the second story would not overlook someone else's backyard. You were overlooking the forest if you're on Upper Sylvaner, or if you're on a creek, you're overlooking the creek. In this instance, they are overlooking the churchyard next door, but their closest neighbor, I don't know if there's someone here to represent their closest neighbor tonight. She's a very dear icon of this valley, and she's very ill. She can't be here tonight, so we really don't know what she thinks. So I would ask you to not approve this tonight, mostly because it violates our CCNRs in two important ways. They do not allow second units. And it's as a precedent. We don't have a home in St. Helena, in Sylvaner, that's two-story in these areas. We don't have any units that have second units. And we don't have any units that have a garage lift, where you elevate your cars to fit more cars in. We have a lot of houses where people have filled up their garages. They no longer have a place to park. But this is important to us. And the other thing is, I think the neighbors are, really should be entitled to an opportunity to talk to Mr. Schoenfeld, because I think he would understand better what this neighborhood is about, what we value and cherish about it. I'm not opposed to him building a house, or even demolishing that one. I think certainly, if you've seen the house, it looks disgraceful. The yard is dead, the weeds are overgrown. That's great, the new house will be fire-retardant, but this one is kind of a fire hazard. And finally, on the matter of CCNRs. CCNRs are a legal document that is enforceable. And the courts have consistently found that CCNRs are in effect, whether they were ever recorded with the city at the time of the development, and whether or not the homeowners' association is still in effect. And in fact, the courts have gone, often gone one step further and awarded attorney's fees to people who have to litigate based on the CCNRs. And the reason for that is that the neighbors had to act as attorney general, because there was no other entity to enforce. So we're just asking you tonight to, at the very least, continue this item and ask this developer, this is the first time we've had a developer working in our neighborhood, to ask him to meet with the neighbors, so he can understand what it is that we value about our neighborhood, and how he can perhaps do something different here, to be consistent with the design of the other houses, and to be consistent with our CCNRs. That's very, very important to us, working with the neighbors and just exploring this more carefully, because this sets a precedent in our neighborhood. Sylvaner, at one time, was probably the neighborhood in St. Helena least likely to change in character. That was because of our CCNRs. We have families with children who grew up here, and those children are now coming back to buy these homes. And we'd really like to keep it that way, and we'd like for Mr. Schoenfeld to be a good neighbor and have a successful project. I'm sure he's going to sell this house for a lot more than he paid for it, regardless of what he does with it. But we're all going to live with it for a long time after he's finished his deal and sold the house and left. So thank you for your patience. Please help us preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi there. My name is Colleen Chaplet, and I live at 2610. Donna queued me up nicely when she talked about the character and families living there, and children moving back. I have a letter to read. It's dated August 2nd, 2016, and it's from Matthew Heil. It's regarding agenda item number five, 1695 Chardonnay Way. Dear Chairperson Kissner, Vice Chairperson Coburnstein, and Commissioners Monette, Parker, and Sweeney, I would like to first extend my congratulations to Sarah and Mary on your reappointments to the commission, and to Grace and Mary on your elections as chair and vice-chair, respectively. I hope this letter finds you all well, and that you are enjoying the beginnings of another magnificent harvest season in beautiful St. Helena. My parents, David and Elena Heil, still live at 1529 Shablie Circle, where they have lived since April 1987. My brother, Alexander Heil, and his family recently moved into my childhood buddy, Jeff Janis's old house, at 1578 Shablie Circle. I always loved the family atmosphere of the Sylvaner neighborhood, and cherished the many memories I have of growing up on Shablie Circle, with so many wonderful families and friends in the neighborhood. It was an amazing place to grow up. On any given day, there were ten to thirty kids playing in the street, riding bikes, having water-balloon fights, and impromptu games of football, basketball, or wiffleball would pop up just about every night, all year round. Little did I know at the time, but this was not an accident. The Sylvaner subdivision was- an accident. The Sylvaner subdivision was created largely to provide housing stock that would be affordable for year-round working families. The CCNRs that accompany this development provide evidence of this. Just a few decades before, the same was done on Valley View Street, I imagine for similar motives. These CCNRs explain why the recent run of spec development has largely been kept out of these two neighborhoods. As you all well know, the current medium-density zoning ordinance development standards include verbiage that has had the unattended consequence of incentivizing large-scale homes with guest houses on relatively small lots. The housing elements that, the housing element that introduced this was meant to incentivize two-family houses on MR zoning to encourage infill development. It also encouraged the development of second or granny units on existing parcels so that single-family members, CIA students, and the like could be housed without needing further residential development spreading into agricultural land in and outside of the city limits. Further, there are exemptions and bonuses for garages and second floor, second units that give additional square footage that don't count against the floor area ratio. This was all done in hopes to keep our neighborhoods with small houses on small lots and to encourage the infill development of two or more smaller houses on medium and larger lots. It has had the reverse effect. And as we all know, in these past six years post-Great Recession, we have seen a spike of developers who have taken advantage of the code as adopted to build large houses with guest units that are used wholly or exclusively as vacation homes, second homes, et cetera. Exhibits include Tainter Street, Stockton Street, Scott Street, Allen Avenue, et cetera. This is certainly changing the character of each neighborhood this takes place in as well as changing the character of our town. But in large part, it is currently legal according to the development standards and zoning ordinances. While on the planning commission, we fought to change this situation, but our staff was overwhelmed with current planning and other issues. Some believe that the proper time to do this was upon adoption of the general plan update. This still has yet to come to pass, but I am optimistic it will happen soon. Regardless, I believe that the aforementioned CCNRs are substantial evidence for you to deny this application for the following reasons. CCNRs limit structures to one story, they prohibit second units, and for those reasons, I do not believe you can make the finding that the proposed development is compatible in areas considered as having a unified design or historical character. We're required finding number four. With my best regards, Matthew P. Heil, 51 Summit Road, Malvern, Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Brian Ivanoff. I live at 1645 Chardonnay Way, which is just down a few. I'm actually one of the people who, I grew up here. I've been here since 71 and actually bought my grandma's house. It was her house on Chardonnay that my wife and I purchased. You, you're going to hear a lot about precedence, what kind of precedence does this set, so I don't want to cover that. I was reading online, basically the design review statements. And what I want to do is kind of make some comments, but also just raise some questions that came to my mind. I don't know the answer to them, but it's, I think it's questions that maybe you guys should ask yourselves as well. So per the wording in the demolition permit, it says while the existing home is in good condition, the building is not architecturally significant. So while the house looks really bad now, a few years back, it wasn't that bad. It looked like all, all of our homes. So part of it is I think it's been let go. So I, looking at today's condition is totally different than looking at it two years ago. I also believe, I don't know, but I think they did some remodeling, the prior owners did some remodeling on it. So the other thing is if it's not architecturally significant or meeting the buyer's requirements, why was it purchased in the first place? So this kind of goes to the due diligence comment too of, for me personally, it's like if this doesn't meet what you need, why are you buying it? So it's basically another one of these things we see in St. Helena where it was a $980,000 lot purchase is what happened essentially, if this demolition goes through. The design review section also states that the purpose is to promote the qualities that bring value to the community and foster attractiveness and functional utility of the community as a place to live and work. So I think we should ask what type of investment is this project? Is it a short-term investment in the form of financial gain for an owner or a developer? Or is it a long-term investment for the community? So beyond property taxes and attractiveness, is this going to bring a new worker into town? Is it going to bring new kids to our schools? Is it going to bring people rooted in, in our community? And then actually, my biggest concern is environmental. So I actually was pretty impressed with the, the technology that was being described as being super efficient. But for me, you know, again, back to the design review, it says, one of the things to determine is whether sustainability and climate protecting are promoted through the use of green building practices. I would say go prior to that statement, prior to building, and ask yourself what kind of impact is a demolition going to have. So while this is going to be efficient, my concern is the environmental concern of how does placing an 800 or 1800 square foot building in a landfill environmental and how does it align with the environmental values and climate protection? Actually, that's all my notes. So, thank you.
My name is Dick Rogers. I live at 1570 Chablis Circle. I've been a resident there since 1990. And in looking at this project, it, I think it's fairly obvious to all concerned that it does violate the covenants that are in existence for that unit. There are seven separate CCNRs for the entire Sylvaner area. They are all relatively similar in their wording in terms of this action. The biggest concern I have, I suppose, and I'm not going to repeat everything that's gone before, but in response to one of the comments made, I spent some time this afternoon, afternoon looking at the dictionary definition of the split level. This clearly does not meet that qualification. Some of the issues are that were given under the various statements or listings was the fact that it is a side-by-side room, not at the same level, off by perhaps one half of that story. Another description said it is not, you know, they're side-by-side, but it is not one room on top of another. There were two additional ones I looked at that are all basically saying the same thing. This house does not qualify as a split level. It's presented as a single level. And yet, the additional space added for the loft is equivalent to another level and extends for the entire length of the house. So consequently, we're looking at a large, large building that is totally inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood, for, for the entire development. As was previously mentioned, we live there because we enjoy the ambiance, the neighborhood, everything about it. This will make a major change. And especially the change, it adds a separate residential unit on the front end of the property and calling it a guest house. My concern at this point in time is it does not qualify under that stage. And, and I don't care if you put a second or a third story silo on top of it and still say it's a single story. It's not anything other than a very tall building, which happens to be situated right at the entrance to the inner Sylvaner area, which is, there are four residential streets that normally enter off of that street or off of Sylvaner Avenue. Now, if this project cannot be delayed on the lack of consistency or denied based on the lack of consistency with the surrounding development, then I would ask it at a minimum that the project be delayed for a couple of reasons. Number one, it was mentioned earlier, we did not have a chance to meet with the developer and express our concerns. But secondly, we are on the process at this current time of reactivating the Architectural Control Committee, which is listed and stated in each of the separate covenants that exist in, in the area. And we would like time to evaluate and consider what options are open to us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Curt.
My name is Susan Curtin. I live at 2623 Columbar Court where I've lived for 38 years. And I would like to say thank you to everyone who spoke so eloquently. I'm not even going to try to speak to this except to ask that the commission, please enforce the CCRs. Please evaluate everything that's been said and please either decline or delay this. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tiny Boak. I live at 1695 Chardonnay Way, right on the corner across the street from 1695. I'm going to read just a short little thing. My husband and I have lived at St., at 1690 Chardonnay Way for almost 40 years. We are both opposed to the proposed demolition and building of two houses directly across the street from us at 1690 Chardonnay. The CCRs prohibit a guest house being built. The additional main house and garage will be approximately six feet higher and will block any view of the hills across the valley. This project does not appear to be for family housing that fits the design of the Sylvaner neighborhood. And I would like to applaud everyone that has gotten up and spoke. We're speaking from our hearts and we're speaking of an area, from an area where we live and love. And we all would like to see this postponed and we would love to meet with the builder. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close. Mary?
Mary Stevenson, 2683 Chablis Court. And I'm speaking as an individual, not as a representative of our town, St. Helena. You know, a lot of people might think it's hypocritical for me to encourage high-density in other parts of our town and to be opposed to this house and guest house being built in my neighborhood. I thought a lot about that today because it, it, in some ways, I do feel a bit conflicted on that. But when you look at what's happening here, it's the same thing that's happening in other parts of town. But we're lucky enough to have the CCNRs in place so that it can't happen in our neighborhood. You know, if a developer came, bought this house and wanted to build two really well-designed green duplexes here so that we could have two families living in Sylvaner that are working families in St. Helena, I would fight for them to be able to do that. And I think a lot of my neighbors would too, because this is a working family neighborhood. But this is not that kind of project. This is a speculative project for someone who is not going to live in the house. It's a plan that, for a house that will most likely sell somewhere between $2 and $3 million. We've seen this done on Allen Street, on Hudson Street, on Stockton Street. And it takes housing away from the working families in St. Helena. Most likely, a home like this in our neighborhood would become a second home because most families are not buying two or $3 million houses, particularly in Sylvaner. So this would be yet another house that we would lose to a second home. So it would have a negative impact, not just on my neighborhood, but on our town. And you can't stop a lot of these. You guys have to approve a lot of these things that come up. There is another one just across the street from the one that just sold for $3 million bucks that was approved recently. But you can't stop this one because we have the CCNRs to do it. So I encourage you to, to not approve this project this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stevenson. Anyone else?
Good evening. John Mark Chaplet, 2610 Pinot Way. I completely echo what Mary just said. And it's, I was just thinking that, you know, I don't know that this is anything new here, but I am concerned about the, the precedent of, the precedence of the, the idea of pushing the boundaries on these houses. And, and I really think it's, it's sort of strange to think that, that a million-dollar house is affordable. But, because they're not. You know, million-dollar houses are not affordable, but that's about the best we can do in St. Helena towards affordability with these single, uh, single-family houses. And this isn't going to be anywhere near that. I mean, if they purchased this lot for $900,000, I can only imagine that it's got, it's got to sell for something that's going to be clearly unaffordable for, for most people that live in the neighborhood. And we're seeing our housing stock being turned over to second homers more and more and more. And I encourage you to do what you can to slow this down. And it's certainly great that we live in one of the few neighborhoods in St. Helena that, that we still do have families in. And we don't have a lot of empty homes. And a lot of the other neighborhoods that we walk through, they're, they're dark during the week. They're only visited on weekends or, or occasionally. So I hate to see our, our housing stock being turned over to, to emptiness. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close the public comment. Sarah, would you like to open the discussion, please?
Absolutely. I definitely echo some of the concerns that my fellow commissioners brought up, specifically the definition of what a split level is. I don't think that a loft does qualify that. And I do feel that with lack of a definition in our municipal code and general plan and zoning, we can definitely look to Webster's dictionary to determine what a split level is. I also, my, it's, it is this equal concern, but a bigger concern is the second unit that's on the corner and the visibility, given that it is a corner. It's a significant turning corner. I walk the neighborhood, actually, I walk the neighborhood regularly and I don't see how a house on the corner of a very active street and corner is, is a smart idea planning-wise. Moving on, I just, I, I don't see how the garage works. I under, I understand how the garage works. I just don't see the feasibility of a lift. Would it be the first lifted garage in St. Helena? Very possibly. I just, I think it'll be more of a storage center and an attic and a garage rather than actual lift. I'd like to suggest that, that we do postpone this and then give a chance for the developer to talk to the neighbors. That seems to be what they are requesting this evening, is to talk to him, to continue to kind of get some concerns out. But I'm also open to if we just want to just move forward with our concerns and...
I think we should continue with the commission comments and then we're going to make a decision. Bobby, would you like to speak?
Chair Kissner, as staff, just, I just wanted to jump in and, and remind the planning commission that the, the question before them is the design of the structure. So there's no question regarding the use as both the second unit and the single-family home are both permitted in this zoning district. So just in order to facilitate the discussion, staff wanted to inform the commission that the, the purview before them is the design. And while the CCNRs do specifically preclude second units, that's a permitted use by the city. And so we would not be enforcing CCNRs with that, that do prohibit that. So just wanted to provide that to the commission to facilitate their discussion.
I would rather go after it. I don't, I hate to be argumentative, especially on an issue like this. But, and I'm glad our attorney is here because I, I happened to take one last stroll through the second unit regulations right before I came over here. And the last, after it says, all the rules that apply to them, the last section, which is D, it says, "It is not the intent of this section to override lawful use restrictions as set forth in CCNRs," which clearly means to me that we don't have to look at this second unit as a permitted use, that the CCNRs are not overwritten by the permitted use regulations in our ordinance. And I'd be happy to hear, you know, what our attorney has to say, but it seems pretty clear to me.
Number, what are you reading?
This is, this is section 17116030D.
Thank you.
The very last provision.
It's in the municipal code.
And I seriously just saw it at 5:00 today. Yeah.
If the chair would like me to respond to that, would now be an appropriate time for me to respond.
I would, I would think that would be very fine. I would, I would think that would be very fine, that you talk.
The, this is another area, and it seems more frequently than I would like. Um, I'm actually called before you to talk about areas where the state of California has, has, um, limited our discretion, and this is an area where the state has, um, with respect to decisions about second units, um, and specifically, the state has said, um, that cities do not have the discretion to deny second units under these circumstances. So in my view, this language is simply language that was making an effort to preserve whatever might be left, um, after the state had legislated, but in my view, um, that ship sailed a long time ago, and I agree with, with Planning Director House that the city does not have the discretion to make its decision on the basis of a desire to enforce the CCRs or to reconsider what is a permitted use, both under local ordinance and under state law, um, and that if the commission is inclined to either continue this application or to deny it, that your decision, um, needs to be based on the findings that are in the ordinance for the decisions that are before you, um, the design review and the demolition, and that, that if the direction this evening is that you, you're inclined, by a majority of you, to, to deny the application, you should give direction, um, to your staff to prepare appropriate findings for that memorializing that decision, and it would be helpful for you to then articulate, before giving that direction, what the bases you, um, you have are for denying, uh, given the findings for the specific decisions that are before you. But again, this issue of, of the use and the allowance of a, of the second unit irrespective of the CCRs is, um, is really not before you. That's my, that's my opinion. I know it's an unpopular one this evening, but typically, um, all my city attorney colleagues that I know of are uniform in saying that cities rarely have a role in enforcing CCRs, and even if, and the CCRs I reviewed, um, for this, um, this unit, um, confer no enforcement right on the city at all. Um, in other words, sometimes CCRs do reserve that right to cities under certain circumstances, um, but that's not the case here, at least that I've observed in the CCRs. But again, even if that were there in a nineteen seventy-seven set of CCRs, state law changed in the nineteen eighties to, um, prevent cities from exercising that kind of authority, precluding altogether second units. So I don't think we have that discretion. But again, you do have discretion to deny, but it's important, I think, that you base it on factors other than the desire to conform to the CCRs.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? Is that second units in general, all, all across the board, or affordable second units, or could you elaborate?
Unfortunately, it's all second units, and the state did not limit that to, um, to regulated affordable units.
Or fortunately. I have another question. I mean, can I infer from what you've just said that there is case law that, that if the neighbors were to sue, I mean, the only recourse then for the neighbors is to make, I'm assuming, to make a lawsuit, and is there a case law showing that the state, um, laws about second units on that particular issue trump the CCRs from, from that perspective as well?
I don't wanna weigh in on what a private lawsuit might look at.
So you didn't see any case law?
Look like between, uh, the case law that I do know of is case law that has, has, um, scolded cities for denying second units, um, and has imposed attorney fees, awards against cities on that basis.
Even when there were CCRs?
No, those cases didn't involve the question of CCRs, but I'm not suggesting that the neighbors don't have the authority under their CCRs to enforce this. In other words, if you were inclined to grant the permit and the applicant were to proceed with that development, again, I don't wanna weigh in on a private dispute at all, but my sense is that they reserve any rights that they have under the CCRs to enforce those.
I was just wondering if, based on what you had said, if you had seen that because of the change in the state law, those CCRs had been weakened, but I, I guess we can't assume that.
You know, Bob?
What you're saying, though, if I understand too, is also if we were to deny based on whatever reason, and, or, or, excuse me, approve, that this, the, the community could still go back and do their own private lawsuit, that it would be out of the context of what we're talking about here. So any decision we make needs to be within constraints of design and consistency with design review.
That's exactly right, and, and frequently, in a lot of different contexts where the state has limited our discretion in some respects, it hasn't taken it away in all respects. So the focus here ought to be on where you do have discretion, and that is under the findings for the decisions that are before you.
Then I would like to go again and say that I have a hard time with it under the resolution findings of two, five, nine, and fourteen. Two being compatibility of design with the immediate environment of the site, five being whether the design promotes harmonious transition in scale and character in areas between different designated land use. Two is whether the amount and arrangement of open space and landscaping are appropriate to the design and function of the structures, and fourteen, in areas considered by the board as having a unified design character or historical character where the design is compatible with such character.
I would add to that, uh, and we can, I assume we should talk about these in more detail. Number three, the relationship of the design to the site. Um, you said five, eight, was it in your list also?
No.
Okay. I, I have some issues with eight, um, and also ten.
I have issues with number six, um, compatibility. Hold on, I can't read it.
With future construction.
With future construction, both on and off-site. That's another finding that I have difficulty with because of the precedent issue. Um, I, this is a, this is a hard one for me, because I really love the, the description of the construction, the, you know, the Tesla metaphor, and I, I really like that, and I also really like using second units as infill for, for, um, providing affordable housing in this town. I think it's really important, and, um...
And I agree with you, Bobby. I just think the placement of it is inappropriate to the site.
I'm just saying that first, but I would just really like to see, I also am, uh, kind of astonished that, um, when people come in to build, whether private or, or spec, that they don't talk to the neighbors first to find out what's happening and what's going on, um, and, you know, why would you wanna plow through, uh, even if you weren't gonna do it for yourself? Would you really want to hurt people with your, um, profession? So I'm, I'm just, um, always surprised that developers and private builders don't, um, do full vetting before, uh, you know, with the neighbors before buying property with certain goals, but that's just a personal opinion. However, I, I do think it's a really good idea to, to continue this, to give the neighbors, because they've expressed a desire to do so, a chance to speak with this well-intentioned, um, I'm going to, um, assume, um, builder, to see if some compromises can be made. It seems to me that you can't have a second story, and you can't have a second unit. Can something else be done that would be satisfactory to the builder and, and the neighbors? And so I would really like to see a continuance with, uh, you know, we could deny on those, because of those findings, but I would like to see continuance to give, um, these people a chance to work it out, because the builder also expressed a desire to speak with the neighbors. So that's, that's my feeling on this.
I echo a lot of what I've heard. Um, I'm actually not as opposed to the location of the second unit, actually, because I think it puts it more accessible to an, uh, an independent renter, as opposed to, most of the guest units we see are tucked behind, and the likelihood of it ever being, uh, someone other than the, the residents living in it are, are less likely. So, um, and I, from what I'm hearing from our attorney, the, the whole const, the, the concept of CCRs, CCRs, although they have kept the, the neighborhood consistent over time, don't weigh in here. However, I think we have plenty of issue around design. Um, you know, the question, and, and I appreciate what the builder says in terms of return on investment, but that's not really what we're here for. That is your, that is your concern. Um, you know, it's our job to make sure that we're protecting neighborhoods and that they're consistent with what they have been, and so I believe there are a lot of design modifications you could make to this plan that would still, um, yield a beautiful project. Um, again, I'm not opposed to the second unit. I don't think from a legal standpoint, it's something we can discuss tonight, um, but I think you could come up with two structures on this property that meet your demands, that are consistent with the neighborhood, that perhaps could ultimately provide two families, um, a location to live, and, um, would not require you pushing so up against what has been a consistent look and feel of that neighborhood. I've often said at this deus, and I'll say it again, "Design is fashion," so if the homes look different, I have, I'm less opposed to that than my commissioners. I think design and fashion change over time, and homes built in the seventies looked different than homes built in two thousand and sixteen, so, um, uh, the fact that you wanna demolish and replace, I, I support that. I think building construction materials are better today, so, you know, all of those things are not concerns for me, but, coming in and not, this is a very active community. They are very forthcoming, and I think willing to meet with you, and it doesn't sound like that's ever happened, so I put that more on, on you as an outside builder. That's your responsibility to pursue, and, and clearly hasn't been done, and I think that the idea of a continuance allows, um, both, uh, the, the neighbors, as well as yourself and your investors, to come together and come up with a solution that probably is gonna address a lot of these things, um, and will give us a much easier way to find path to approval in the future.
Now, weigh in. Um, I'm not gonna read all the, um, the, the things that I have, uh, because they're mostly the same. I, I had two, five, eight, fourteen, uh, and, um, sixteen. I also felt that the, um, project is overly massive and doesn't fit the image of the rest of the Sylvaner tract. Uh, the height, height of the building does not fit into the immediate neighborhood. Uh, if you wanna go down to Columbar, which is a long way away, uh, there are some buildings that are of greater height. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, I find you right now of neighborhood compatibility cannot be made. I certainly would entertain, um, the feeling of, um, having the builder meet with the, uh, residents and resolve this and come back. Uh, but that's up to the builder to decide, and, um, he, he'd have to tell us whether he's, uh, agreeable to doing that. Are you ready? Would you do that, Mr. Schaefer?
I just, I have a question along those lines. We can either continue or we can deny, uh, without prejudice, which allows him to come back when he's ready, like, within a year, and my only concern is that when we continue, I'm not sure that people actually know when it gets back on the agenda, where if we denied it, um, without prejudice, I think it has to
Well, I was thinking we could, we could ask Mr. Schoenfeld how long he would like to take, and then we could take into consideration what our calendar looks like, and then put a semi-hard date on for when to continue. I would also ask, like to ask on behalf of the applicant, what cost, an additional cost he would incur if we deny, because I don't...
Yeah, I'm not interested in, in that. I'm just interested in notice.
But it's important to know. We have oftentimes sent people back and added money to their bill. That's really not something that we should be doing.
So there are, there are three options for the commission, uh, should they not choose to approve the project. Uh, so there's the option to continue to a date certain, so that specifies when the project will be back. However, it puts a, a timeline on, on the speed with which these changes and, and negotiations, should you wanna call them, must, must occur, uh, but then everyone in the room knows when the project will be back before the commission. You could continue to a date uncertain, which would require another public hearing notice, so everyone who received the notice would get one. It would go back into the newspaper, uh, and when the applicant was ready to request that the project be brought back onto the agenda, it would be do so in notice, and the cost associated with that is six hundred dollars for the noticing fee and the labels, uh, associated with, with that. Should the commission choose to deny the application, then it is a complete de novo. There is no action, um, on this specific project, except for an appeal to the city council, that the developer has no more options other than the appeal fee, uh, and should he want to return with a new design, it would require a completely new design review application fee, package, et cetera.
State for the record what those fees are currently. Ballpark?
Approximately five thousand dollars. I think it's thirty-seven hundred plus the six, so that would be.
It's important for people to hear that. We're talking thousands of dollars difference.
So I'm, I'm wondering if it's appropriate to ask the developer, which he would prefer?
I guess you did.
Oh, you did?
Oh, he said he would come back, but for, maybe it's, if he has a timeline, we can look at the calendar.
Or, and, and the public, I mean...
If I might suggest too, that, that if, I, I think it would be important to hear from the applicant, um, and to reopen the public hearing for purposes of allowing the applicant to address the commission on that point.
I'll reopen the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Schaefer, would you? Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, I didn't hear you.
I, I just wanted to address the height, which is one of my major considerations here, um, and particularly because of the location of this lot. It is at an entrance, and because some of the things that people think are unique, that you have this, you know, religious institutions nearby, and you have the cemetery across the street, you also have a full view of this house as you're coming down spring, and, um, I do think that the, I, I don't think this is a split level by any stretch of the imagination, and in my mind, to approve it, one of the things that would have to happen is it would have to come into the definition of, uh, one-story or split-level home, and, um, I, I'm also concerned about the garage. One of the standards here is whether the ancillary functions, uh, whether they're compatible with the project's design concept. I, I did find this garage quirky. I think that the, and I find it not really useful for whoever's gonna live there. I mean, I, if it's really gonna be a family, I can't imagine wanting to have to go through that to park your two, two cars, so I would appreciate a further look at that, definitely. Um, I hear what Tracy said about putting the, uh, second unit in front, but to me, that also, uh, really calls attention to it, and whether or not it's in the CCRs, it is different than the whole character of the neighborhood, and were it in the back, uh, it wouldn't be seen, but if we don't, you know, and, and I lastly wanna say, uh, I don't wanna do anything, uh, in terms of approving it, that prejudices the neighbors, um, you know, as far as whatever they have, have to say, but I find the placement of the second unit odd, and it calls attention to itself, and it makes it less harmonious, uh, with the whole neighborhood.
And I know that we're not considering the CCRs, but it is a, a, um, disturbing issue, because these are rules that people thought were applied and that would be powerful, and maybe they are, and it's just so undermining to the whole system of, you know, going by the rules. Um, there's a hierarchy of rules here in the town, the, you know, our, our zoning codes trump the, possibly trump these rules. They do in this setting. Whether they do in court, I don't know, but that's just, I, I'm, I just would really like to see a dialogue be happening in the town about that, because it's fairly, um, you know, it's confusing, and it's kind of undermines, um, a, a sense of security and undermines the process, to my mind. I mean, just, just to, to find out more about it and, and how these situations have been resolved in the past and how they might be resolved in the future.
I agree with you, Bobby, and, uh, until Mr. Brown spoke, I had started out by, although the city is not obligated to abide by neighborhood CCRs, the prudent thing to do is honor them if at all possible, and, uh, Mr. Brown's telling me we can't, so...
As a practical matter, um, I appreciate the commission's dilemma, um, but as a practical matter, the findings that each of you have articulated accomplish the same protection. They just do so in a manner that respects, um, your limited role and the role of the decision, your, your, you know, the, the role of, of decision-maker for the particular decisions in front of you. You're able to respect the same concerns. You're just not doing it in a way that is, is illegal.
Can I just ask one clarifying question? Is, it kinda gets back to what Mary had. Mary was reading from our city ordinance, and what you're stating is it, it doesn't matter where city ordinance says, we are trumping state law. We can't trump state law.
That's exactly right, and, and the other concern about CCRs is, is, you know, and, and I don't want to, um, suggest in any manner that the CCRs here are suffering from those same concerns, but there are many ancient CCRs that still exist and are recorded against properties that have, um, horrible, you know, racial, racially discriminatory provisions and so forth, and it's long been the rule that, that those no longer are, are respected or enforced. So, again, I'm not suggesting that these CCRs are analogous in any manner to that, but I'm just suggesting CCRs don't trump the law as it, as it evolves.
Well, I understand, but my point is that it, it, it is not a good idea to polarize parts of the town, to polarize one, you know, a group of people with, who are trying to look and, and are depending on certain rules, and then there are these other rules. Um, I understand what you're saying. All I'm saying is I'm hoping that if you need to update, or that there can be a dialogue to find out exactly what your status is, um, by, by case law precedents or however, just to, just to, to kind of build a bridge here, because rather than having, um, another split, another separation, or a sense of, of, you know, feeling helpless or, or having your, what you've been depending on undermined by, by something else, that's absolutely...
But that should fall out of context of the planning commission.
Uh, well, I was just to add, just to add, along this point, um, while CCRs are not enforced by the city, uh, we do, as a city and a department, ask that folks who live in communities or neighborhoods that have CCRs gain approval from their architectural review committee prior to submitting to the city, uh, so I think the suggestion of the concept that the... prior to submitting to the city. So I think the suggestion or the concept that the current residents are going to reactivate their HOA and possibly create a architectural review committee can get in front of some of these issues proactively and address some of the concerns that have been voiced by the commission, although they're not part of our purview here.
And I'd like to open the public comment again. Mr. Schoenfeld, would you like to tell us what your decision is, please? Would you come up to the microphone?
So, I wanted to find out, when is the next, not the next meeting, but the one after that?
September sixth.
So I would like to table this until September sixth. I would like to set a date certain, and then have a meeting with the neighbors in the interim, and then we'll have time to discuss. I hope that would give us everybody enough time to discuss any of the issues that, you know, have come up here tonight, and hopefully resolve whatever we can, to the extent that we can, and come up with the best possible solution.
Thank you. Has anyone else got any comments?
I do. Donna Oldford, resident at twenty-six, Twenty Pino Way. I've actually been watching this. We have really good communications in our community. I'm not on the noticing list, but I know about it. The first application that came in was for a two-story house with a second unit. That was not well-received. The next application that came in was for a split-level house with a second story. We're talking semantics here, and I'm going to, I'm going to say the word that's the elephant in the room. When I first saw this house, I looked at max out the building, big huge pool area in the rear, second unit with kitchen facilities, and a garage that will accommodate more cars than are feasible for this site. And this said vacation rental to me. So I would like, enter it into the record tonight, that we are very concerned that this design is basically for a vacation rental or the equivalent of that. Because if you have a home where multiple families converge only on weekends, and it's, it's the same as whether money changes hands or not necessarily, this is not an area for vacation rental homes. This is a family neighborhood. I do this all the time, not with residential projects, but with wineries and other commercial projects. You can't do a redesign of this project and come back. And I would also say, he needs to look at those coverage factors, because I had concerns with that too, and the ratios. You can't do that work in two weeks and come back to the hearing, because your staff, first of all, your staff doesn't have time to write a new staff report and renotice and come back to you with that information. And if we have a week, I can tell you from my, I speak only for myself, but I can tell you, there is no way that design even comes close to what I consider meeting the character of our neighborhood, irrespective of the CCNRs. This needs some time. In view of how this came to you initially, how it's come back to you, I think what really needs to happen is a decision tonight to deny this project, make it very clear to the applicant that additional due diligence is needed. And I would say a meeting with the neighborhood is a courteous thing to do, and hopefully a constructive one. But I just don't see anything coming back to you with much difference with less than a week for you to get it in. I would also like to say, we would really like to see something done about the maintenance of the house. I'm happy to hear that the new house will be maintenance-free. This one's been maintenance-free too. And it is disgraceful. Thank you.
Jay Green, fifteen, sixteen Oak Avenue. I'm coming at this question on a tangent. I heard City Attorney Brown say that state law prohibits the city of St. Helena from enforcing CCNRs, but is that the same thing as saying that the city cannot take notice of CCNRs and concur with them? That's my question.
I'd like you to answer that, please.
So I think, I think the speaker may have misheard me, or perhaps I misspoke. But I did not intend to say that state law prohibited cities from enforcing CCNRs. I did say that it's quite rare that that's the case. But there are instances in which, for example, in the approval of a subdivision, cities will certainly take a role in wanting to review and approve any CCNRs that are adopted. And in some cases, cities do insist that the CCNR is reserved to the city and enforcement right. As I said, the CCNRs, I'm not sure they're the correct ones, I think they are, that I reviewed just today, did not contain any language in them reserving that right of enforcement to the city here. What I meant to say, or what I thought I had said, was that state law prohibits the city from denying second units. And that is the case irrespective of pre-existing CCNRs. So I hope that clears it up.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
So, you think this provision came in the ordinance before that view of state law? Because it's right here in the second unit provision, which is kind of weird.
I'd be speculating as to when that, without looking at the legislative history of this ordinance, I'd be speculating. I read that as, that language, you know, again, without the benefit of the legislative history for the ordinance. My belief is that cities like St. Helena, all up and down the state, scrambled to adopt second-unit ordinances after the state law went into effect, because we were told, if you don't do that, we're going to strip you of even more authority. And so I suspect that this was language put in there in the hope, to some extent, that as the law evolved, there might be some reservation of some ability. But it also suggests to me, if you look at the wording of that, it says, it's not, you could read it again, but essentially it says, it's not the intent of this ordinance to
Override.
To override. Well, I could read that as saying override the right of those who actually have a right to enforce CCNRs, to enforce them. And in other words, I don't see that, that, it certainly would be meaningless in a situation, whereas here, the city has no explicit right to enforce the CCNRs, to have a provision in the ordinance saying, well, we're not overriding our right to enforce something. We have no right to enforce anyway. You see what I'm saying?
Kind of. And can you address, I mean, a lot of what's in our plan about second units is this desire that they be affordable housing. What is our ability to place conditions on second units, if any?
That's a broader conversation that I'll need to come back to you on.
I think it would be maybe helpful for this conversation with the neighbors.
Do you mean like condition, what kinds of conditions were you considering?
Well, for instance, some that might go to encouraging them to the extent that they actually provide affordable housing, and there is some mechanism to ensure that that is what's happening. Or, I don't know, you know, whatever there might be, that there may be a discussion here about where the second unit should be on the property, and you know, what kind of latitude is there?
What kind of latitude do you have? That's a bigger discussion, and certainly not one we can engage in for this project, because the decision, the only entitlements before you are not with respect, this is a permitted use under the current state of the city's zoning ordinance. So we could, you know, as staff has available, I don't know whether and to what extent staff has any available time, is something that we can come back to the commission on and discuss. What are the limitations and range of your discretion to impose conditions on second units?
I think, as it applies, as it applies in this context, second units are defined, so I think that they would have to fit within the context of the second unit, and they're specifically identified as permitted uses. So beyond that, I think conditions should be subject to the demolition and design review discretionary actions before the commission.
State law, what's known as the second unit law, essentially tells us what the extent of our discretion is, and we could come back to you and describe that to you.
Would you say you could bring this back, Noah?
So if the, this is about this project, not the discussion on second units?
Yes.
Yes. So as Ms. Oldford pointed out, that would be a relatively tight timeframe. Essentially, it would give the applicant about one week to meet with certain residents, get some revisions done to the design, get it back into the city. The city to do both internal review, and it depends on the scope of the revisions. I mean, if there are significant revisions, we would not be able to meet that timeline, because we would have to refer it out for a fire department review, engineering department review, building department review. If they were relatively minor, then we could probably have the conditions rewritten in a brief amount of time. But that is a relatively tight timeframe.
Well, if the applicant is willing to have that caveat, that it might be longer, if it takes longer, if it takes longer to meet with the neighbors, whatever, to make it longer.
Well, I think he was trying to avoid the noticing fee and have a date certain, so that we could determine it now, and this is the notice.
That's right.
So maybe it should be later.
Yeah, I think we should create a little more space. This is also a time when people go on vacation, and we have a holiday intervening. And I think it's a little tight, and we have a lot of other stuff on the schedule. I'd like to give people an opportunity to really meet and discuss.
Yeah, maybe meet twice.
And staff, staff is not recommending September twentieth for a review of this project, given, we'll have a discussion, but we're intending to bring the general plan back before the commission on that date. So that is not a day that we want to have.
How about the first meeting in October?
So the first meeting in October would be October fourth. So the applicant seems that that timeframe would work for him?
Um, Noah, I might interject that I won't be here on the September twentieth meeting. Can we, were you definitely certain for the general plan?
Do we need a motion on that?
I move to continue this to a date certain of October fourth, I believe is the date.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Our next item is a use permit on nineteen forty-five Spring Mountain Road. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kistner. The project before you tonight, as you mentioned, is a use permit requesting approval to construct a, replace a previously existing fence on the corner of Spring Mountain Court and Spring Mountain Road, and construct a new fence, small stone wall combination on the property at nineteen forty-five Spring Mountain Road in the medium-density residential zoning district. The applicant wishes to construct a six-foot-tall redwood fence approximately two feet from the property line on Spring Mountain Road. It's about ten feet back from the edge of pavement on Spring Mountain, a six-foot-tall stone wall along the corner of the property outside of the vision triangle, and a new stone wall and some columns and an entry gate at the front of the house which faces Spring Mountain Court. Use permit was required because the new fencing and walls would be located within the required setback from Spring Mountain Road. And it should be noted that this corner historically had been overgrown. There wasn't existing fence in the location where the fence is currently requested. However, it was overgrown significantly. The property owners bought it, started doing some repair on the fence, demolished that existing fence, and then staff got involved. And if we could have the monitors turned on, I just have some brief exhibits to help explain and orient the commission. So, as mentioned, the property is designated medium-density residential. The municipal code, section seventeen-one-two-zero-zero-one-zero, which discusses walls, fences, and hedges, identifies that when a fence is proposed to be located in a rear or side yard, fences up to eight feet in height may be permitted with the approval of the use permit by the planning commission. And so this is the corner of Spring Mountain Court, Spring Mountain Road, and this is the fence in question currently right along here, and then in this area. This fence is existing, and then this is the area of the entry court that was being discussed. The swimming pool is allowed by right, and the landscaping is essentially a redesign of the current landscape. In addition to the fences, walls, and heights section, there's a section of the code which allows entry gates to be, entry features to extend above the height limitation of fences, and that's identified in seventeen-one-one-two-zero-six-zero projections into required yards and setbacks. In the review of this project, staff identified that although the code would allow with a use for approval fences in the rear or side yard, it doesn't mention a mechanism to allow a fence in the front or side setback. And so, given that the code currently doesn't allow, or doesn't reference a mechanism to allow a fence in this area, the use of the use permit was based on a staff interpretation that the code, as specified, also applied to a fence in these setbacks. And then there is a definite need to create some type of a mechanism for an applicant to request to construct a fence in front or side setbacks, as it's currently an unanswered question in the code. And given that it's a one-hundred-and-thirty-year-old city, and frankly, fence issues are very common for planners to have to get involved in, there's some mechanism that was needed. So based on this need, staff interpreted the code to also apply to front and side setbacks, given the fact that the code did identify that it was appropriate to use them for rear inside yard areas. And then also, the use permit, it's a common tool or mechanism to review these types of questions, used in multiple jurisdictions, and the most predominant one in my professional experience. However, I did some research, of course, Yountville and Calistoga each do it differently. So Yountville uses a variance to allow this type of request. Calistoga has a ministerial use permit used for fence questions. From the department perspective, it's purely an example of oversight of the code, as we've noticed that the code has a few of those, and is discussed on the previous item. And given that the only other mechanism would be a variance, staff reviewed the findings required for that. One of the findings is that the need for, that's triggering the mechanism, in this case, the variance, isn't common enough to warrant a change to the code. Staff feels that fence questions are very common. And then the other finding that would be required for a variance is that the issue is not a self-created hardship that's dictating the need for the fence. Oftentimes, that would be a challenging finding to make, given that someone may be seeking some additional privacy, they may have some noise issues with their neighbors, and so it would be tough, from the staff perspective, to use the variance consistently to address a fence concern, and also be able to say that it's not a self-created situation. Oftentimes, it's just a characteristic of how someone chooses to use their property. And so staff does find that the use permit is the most appropriate mechanism in order to review those questions. However, the code does not expressly say that that is the case. However, given that, the applicants have filed a use permit application. The design of their proposal is before the commission. There are some details in your packets. Of course, there's elevation of the stone wall, the elevation of the entry gate, and then this shows where the stone wall and the fence, how they would interface. Staff reviewed that. Staff reviewed some of the site photos that they provided. This is their home. This is the corner area closest to where the intersection is. And then this is the interior look of the property, looking out onto where the fence would go at Spring Mountain Road. And essentially, this is, this is actually a temporary fence that's installed currently, so essentially it shows you what it would look like, although from the context of the property. And then finally, here is just a quick context map to show, this is the corner lot, Spring Mountain Road, Spring Mountain Court. But given all these factors, staff is recommending approval of the use permit. The applicants and property owner are here, the applicant representative, if there's any questions for them, and I'm available for any questions. representative, if there's any questions for them, and I'm available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions of the staff?
I just had one, and the reasoning not just to do a ministerial approval of this?
Because it was located in the setback, so there, there wasn't a, there wasn't a, they originally came to us after the, the existing fence had been demolished, uh, and so it was tough for staff to call it a repair, given that there was no fence there, and it was hard to decide exactly where it was or the exact height, because there was no, no materials to identify what the previously existing fence looked like. And then also, I believe they were hoping to get a little bit additional. I believe the existing, or previously existing fence was only about four to five feet, although it was overgrown considerably taller than that. And so those were the, the factors that went into the, the staff decision to not be able to act on it, um, ministerial, given that frankly, the code doesn't give me any authority to do so when it's located in the setbacks.
And is this fence, the, um, going to be in front of the pool?
That's right, between the pool and the street.
So it's, and a six going to be more than three and a half, because it needs to be a barrier for the pool?
Uh, there are some requirements for, for separating pools from access, that's correct.
Right.
This, I, I believe they would probably want this fence either way, just given the amount of noise, but the applicants can answer that question.
Okay, but, but I mean, yeah, if it's a, attractive nuisance if you don't have a big fence.
It would serve that, the dual purpose, that's right.
Unless there'd be another fence on the other side.
Yeah, that was my question. Is there a minimum fence height when you have a pool? I couldn't find one anywhere. I found references to tennis courts.
Yeah, there's nothing in the zoning code. It's, there's a building code, I believe there's a building code requirement, and it has to do with the attractive nuisance and keeping your pool safe from having children wander into it. I don't know what the standard is.
Taller than a 10-year-old.
Because nowadays, a lot of people have these covers that slide across, and if you have the cover on, you can step on it, and you don't even go in the pool.
And some of those do satisfy the safety requirements. They have to be built to meet the code requirements.
Okay, but this is primarily requested for privacy and noise reduction, is that?
I believe so. The applicants can answer that, but I believe so.
Anyone else have any question? Oh, public comment? Would the applicant like to speak?
My name is Val Toland, uh, and I'm the applicant, the Greens are the owners. I'm doing the work for them. Uh, the fence that we're putting back up, basically, two feet off of where it used to be, gives the, the Greens the opportunity to put some foliage in front of it and not encroach into this, into the, uh, right-of-way. It'll be a better looking fence than used to be there, because there was about three and a half in one section and five in another, and, uh, so it's, it's just a, a nice property fence. And then the stone fence on the corner, that's a high activity corner, gives more security. Somebody coming through it is going to have to come through a stone wall, not just a wooden fence. And then the pool on the inside does have an automatic cover on it, which would negate in most cities, even to have to have a fence. So this is both a privacy fence, a sound fence, a security fence, and it's, uh, you know, it beautifies the property, both on the outside and the inside. Questions?
You were talking about a car maybe going through the fence, when you're, on the corner, yeah.
On the very corner, somebody came around.
Yeah, totally.
They, they would hit that stone wall.
Could you describe the landscaping a bit? That, the landscape is going to go on the outside, on the, the roadside of the fence, is that?
Yes, if you notice, just on the outside of the fence, on the Spring Mountain roadside, right there, we'll have some little bushes that will give it a little bit of character instead of just looking at a wood fence. Before, it was way overgrown. If you drive by it right now, you'll see a temporary fence up, and that is pretty much what it's going to look like, the, in the positioning. It'll, it'll definitely improve the look that you used to have on that corner.
Uh, could you tell me what's going to be done on the other end of the property?
On the what?
The other, the, your, your pool and stuff is here. I'm talking about this end of the property?
Just that end. Everything else is already there.
So that's really out of the scope of our conversation?
Mm-hmm.
It's, that would be out of the scope of our approval.
Yeah. We're going to put a nice gate, I mean, in.
Here's, to me, that the fence is going down there with a, with a sliding gate down at the end, if I look at this.
That's existing.
That's existing?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. That, that wasn't clear to me. Any more questions, applicant? Anyone else have any questions? Thank you. Tracy, would you like to start the discussion, please?
I think it improves what was there. I think it's within the context of, um, you're giving it a use permit, so if we approve it, it's a permitted use, and I think that it's something that I'm very supportive of, and we should allow them to do it. It's unfortunate that I think they have to go through a use permit. I think that's probably added costs and time and staff input, so maybe we circle back on these zones. That should be something that we address, and I think lesson learned for the public. Don't tear down your fence before you talk to Noah.
Yeah, had there not been an existing fence there, I would have a real issue with this case, because our regulations talk about the fact that particularly in the front yard, we're supposed to have fences pulled back so that you're not obscuring the view of the house. I'm a little concerned about the height of this, um, only because you drive down that whole section of Spring Mountain Road, and most of the fences observe the basic rules. I mean, they have the same traffic coming by. Granted, it doesn't stop, you know, at their corner. I couldn't consider approving this if it wasn't for the offer to put landscaping in front of it, because, um, although we don't allow big fences like this in the front yard, you will see a lot of houses obscured by big landscaping, and I think that mitigates, uh, the impact of it to, to a certain extent. I, oh, I have one more, just one more thing to say. I, I do hope that when we fix the ordinance, we deal with this issue, because these use permit, uh, standards, they actually go to uses. They're talking about noise, fumes, traffic, things like that, that are totally unhelpful, um, in, in this case. And so I'd be real curious to see what other people do. I actually think the variation standards are, are better to address this particular case, but I don't find these standards real helpful myself.
Uh, I definitely support the project. I'm very familiar with the house. I know the previous owners, and the fencing there is important. I also used to work on the top of Spring Mountain Road, and people fly down there, so there's definitely a privacy, safety, noise factor that is definitely, deserves a fence.
Don't take offense. Well, good fences, good fences make good neighbors. This sounds like a good fence, except, I mean, the safety issue for the drivers who might be intoxicated and run into it, I, I don't know. Um, I guess that's not your concern, but, um, wow, that's a difference. And I, I, this was, this is the hardest, most confusing, um, whatever you want to call it, in our, in our zoning. I mean, it's crazy, and then the, the clarification explanation that we're just is confusing to me. It's nothing, it's not, it's not on you. But I'm, hopefully, yeah, it'll get clearer, and it seemed to me the variance would have been more appropriate, except for the reasons that you gave. I guess traffic is the one thing that would have applied, um, that does apply to this, to this fence, so. Anyway, oh, uh, so, yeah, I, I think it's great. I mean, I think it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a mixed bag, but it's more great than not.
Well, my personal opinion is I hope it gets simpler, Bobby.
What?
I said, my personal opinion is I hope that, that part of the ordinance gets simpler. Uh, I have no problem with the project, uh, so, um, do I hear a motion?
Let's see. I move that we determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to section 15303, which exempts construction fences, uh, which exempts the construction of fences, it should say, um, and to approve the request for a use permit to construct new fencing and walls on the property located at 1945 Spring Mountain Road.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker? Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. The next action tonight is a short-term rental permit renewal at 1243 Stockton Street.
And I would like to announce to the chair that I need to recuse myself as a short-term permit holder, but I will be back for item eight to discuss the
Good.
next item.
Thank you. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. Uh, the applicant received their short-term rental permit on July 31st, 2012, and was subsequently renewed, uh, for two years in 2014. The applicant's current STR permit expired on July 31st, 2016. As required by the STR ordinance, the applicant submitted an STR permit renewal application 30 days prior to the permit expiring. As required by the renewal process, staff checked with both the finance department and the police department in order to ensure the applicant has been properly reporting TOT, um, and has fewer than three short-term rental-related complaints filed over the two years of the permit. The short-term rental permit renewal process requires the renewal to be referred to the planning commission for action at a public hearing should either of those provisions not be met. According to the finance department, the applicant has only failed to remit one TOT form in the last fiscal year, which is not uncommon among permit holders, as the monthly reporting requirement is sometimes overlooked. The planning department is actively working with the finance department to ensure that all permit holders are aware of these reporting requirements. The reason why this application is before the planning commission is according to the police department, there have been six calls to police, uh, since April 2015 related to this address. Of these calls, three were neighbor complaints about short-term rental, rentals, however, short-term renters were only involved in one call regarding on-street parking and noise problems. Staff received several comments on this application after the agenda packet was distributed, which have been provided to the commission and are on the back table. Each of these are opposed to the application, although not all the comments were specific to this particular short-term rental. Staff recommends that the planning commission consider the information presented in the staff report and at the public hearing, and find that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15061B3, and accept or reject the required findings and approve or deny the proposed short-term rental permit renewal, uh, for the property at 1243 Stockton Street. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions? Would the applicant like to speak? We'll open the forum.
Hi, uh, my name is Brenda Podesta. I'm the owner of 1243 Stockton Street. I've been there since 2006. Um, my, in preparation for this, uh, meeting, I have been out of town for the last month. My father-in-law went into hospice. I just returned yesterday. He passed away last night, and so I would like to have it continue. I drove down here to be part of this, but I'm absolutely not prepared to speak.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's continue this.
I really would appreciate it. I gotta leave and go back up there now.
No, absolutely. Um, Grace, do you want me to move to continue this?
Yes, please. I really appreciate it.
Is data uncertain fine?
Yeah.
All right. Can we waive those fees? Okay, let's, can I move to continue this to a date uncertain with fees waived?
I do have a lot of documentation, but I just don't think I could say, speak.
I fully understand how you're feeling.
I thank you very much.
Do we have a second on my motion?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
I, I was saying, because I was out of the room. I don't, I don't know what's going on.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll get, uh...
We're going to continue. It's, it's continued.
We'll get Tracy back.
Yeah. I'm, I'm so sorry for your loss.
Appreciate it.
An updated summary of the Planning Commission's direction on the April 2016 general plan is presented by the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission at July 19th, 2016, Planning Commission meeting, and was modified by the Planning Commission at that meeting. And that's all we're gonna discuss tonight. We are not going to get into any new nuances that anyone wants to put in.
Correct.
Thank you.
If you'd like, I could, let me just do a very brief staff presentation. Chair Kistner, members of the Planning Commission, this is the sixth Planning Commission study session on the new general plan. As Chairperson indicated at the previous, at the July 19th Planning Commission meeting, Chair Kistner and Vice Chair Koberstein presented a summary essentially encompassing of the Planning Commission's comments on the, or direction on the general plan, combined with some comments and discussion essentially describing the rationale or the reasoning behind the comments. So that was handed out at the July 19th meeting, and the majority of the, at least this agenda item at that meeting was discussing that handout. And the direction coming off of the July 19th meeting was for staff to take the discussion and comments from the commissions, from the July 19th meeting, and incorporate those into the document. So what you have in front of you, and I apologize because I think we needed at least two, perhaps three iterations of the document, but what staff has put together is a track changes document that chose as, and we tried to capture as best as we could, the direction by the commission in terms of those comments that were prepared for the July 19th meeting. So really, the focus here for the item this evening is for the commission to review staff's attempt to capture the commission's comments on the document from July 19th and provide any direction or corrections as needed to those comments. Before getting into a discussion, I'd just like to kind of pass the ball of baton quickly to Planning Director House, just to give a kind of quick summary as to where things are in terms of the bigger picture as far as processing of the general plan and prospective dates we're looking at now.
Thank you, Victor. So yes, the closing period, or the comment period ended on the 25th, as you all are well aware. Staff received a number of comments, I think about 10 different individuals commented, some, you know, as brief as a couple of sentences, some as voluminous as a foot-thick of comments in printed, right, in printed form. So staff is currently, we met with the Attorney's Office internally with the planning staff. We reviewed and summarized the comments, or I'm sorry, the structure of the comments, and we're planning on providing a full written response to each comment. So essentially how an EIR works is you have all of the analysis, you have your comments that you've received on the EIR. If you made any changes to the EIR in response to those comments, then you identify that in the EIR document in the analysis section, and then you have a response to each of those comments. So that totals, creates the final EIR that's brought before the Planning Commission for review, and then recommended onto the City Council for action. In addition to that, obviously, we have the general plan. We've received a number of general plan comments, and we're reviewing some still today. And so it was the intent, as we mentioned, to try to bring the general plan and EIR back relatively quickly after the closing period. Staff does not anticipate being able to do that anytime this month, obviously, and we were tentatively looking at September 20th. Commissioner Parker has indicated she cannot make it on that day, so we will have to have some discussions and try to see if that's still something that we can accommodate. But that's generally the ballpark timeframe that we're trying to bring the document forward to the commission, and it will be with the goal of having a comprehensive review completed of the general plan. Hopefully, the commission's comfortable with everything in the general plan at that time and the general plan EIR, and they'll be able to recommend onto the City Council, hopefully approval. And we will be acting, or asking you to recommend on both the documents. Oftentimes, or in some jurisdictions, commission will act on the EIR separately from the general plan, with the council having purview of the general plan. We're gonna ask you to recommend on both, and the council as the final authority and decision-making body on the project, being the general plan itself, will also act on the EIR.
So is this intended to be like one meeting where all this comes back to us and then we make a recommendation that same evening?
That's the goal. In order to accommodate that, we have a plan of trying to get you all of the materials a couple of weeks early. Exactly. So we understand the compressed timeframe, and then obviously, it'll be public early as well, so the public has a chance to review everything. That is our goal. If it's not able to occur, then that's completely okay, but this is 10 years in the making, and so it is my number-one priority to get it to the City Council so they can review and act on it, and so in keeping with that goal, we are going to try to shoot for that.
But, you know, a couple of extra weeks after 10 years, it's really important for me to get enough time to be able to...
Of course, of course.
Yeah, okay.
But as I mentioned, it's our goal to have it to you with two weeks before the meeting to have it in review. It is a lot of material. If you need more time, then that's okay, but that's our goal, is to give you two weeks with it.
Okay. I guess we need to go, well, first I'd like to ask, excuse me, Commissioner Parker, if she, being she wasn't here, if she had any comments that we should add to this. I think that we should give her that opportunity.
I do not. I felt like, I watched from home, and I felt that it was a thorough discussion and brought up concerns that I had brought up at past meetings, so...
Okay, then fine, and then we'll just, let's start with comments. Bobby, would you like to make your comments, please?
I have some, okay. I thought that we had on ES3.e. I thought we had added, "The Planning Commission supports the concept of requiring..."
Bobby, would you tell us where you're at, please?
I'm sorry, what is...
Maybe before we start, we should put page numbers on the bottom, so we can say what page we're on.
Good concept. I hate it with no, so we're gonna do, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, on page... On page four...
All right.
Down at B, and then it's one, the red is one, ES3.e. It says, "The Planning Commission supports the concept of requiring a cost-benefit analysis for development projects in order to assist the city in measuring their impacts." And I thought we had added, because I asked, "including cumulative impacts with the cost of analysis funded by the developer with the city determining the scope of the analysis and retaining the consultant performing the analysis." So I'm, that was my recollection, and I didn't see it in there. So I'm either recalling incorrectly, or it needs to be added, so...
And, yeah, I mean, what we're looking at really is for a consensus of the commission on this, so, and obviously, I mean, we tried to pick everything up. I believe in looking at the tape and going through things. Obviously, the issue was discussed. I don't believe there was a consensus that came out of the 19th meeting in relation to what Bobby's mentioning. So I think what would make sense is for the commission to essentially vote on that or decide as to whether that's something you'd like to see added to that specific wording.
And one of my concerns about adding cumulative impact, I was cumulative what? I think that's a pretty, it was just very nebulous. I understand the origin, and I understand the groups that are pushing for that verbiage, but I feel that that, this is very defined, and it's very project-specific, and I think it's something that we can realistically ask a developer to do, and it has, it's tied to a project at hand, but when you talk about cumulative impact, that, to me, can just go on exponentially, and I think can really muddy the waters. And so I don't want, I would like to be specific if these are recommendations from us to the City Council.
Well, it's really, I mean, and just to, in response to that, it is, it is really well-defined in planning. In fact, it's one of, it's, in some cities, it's one of the basic requirement, required requirements for any development application to address cumulative effects. So I think it's pretty well-defined in planning, so...
I think Tracy is referring to being defined in our documents, not other cities' documents.
Well, yes, but the, I mean, if we need to be informed, we need to inform ourselves on what it means. I think it's very, I think it's extremely important.
Well, I think we went through this discussion before.
Anyway, okay.
And the rest is fine.
I like the way it's written. I think we should take a vote on this.
Okay, okay. Did you want to say something, Mary?
May I say anything?
No.
I mean, my recollection when this came up was that exactly what would be in the study was partly within the scope, which is one of the things that the city is gonna determine, but I don't have any problem saying that you're gonna look at existing developments and things that are in the pipeline.
And water and traffic, and, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
That's the big movement right now.
I don't know, do you see a problem with that?
Well, I can understand both points that are being raised by the commission. I would just like to add that sequel analysis includes cumulative impact analysis, so we will be looking at that from an environmental impact standpoint. However, when you start to talk about cumulative impacts and mitigating those, there's difficulty in a nexus for one individual project may have some contribution to a cumulative issue, but there's limited nexus as you could use to require that project to address the entire issue associated with the cumulative impacts of all the other things that are also compounding or adding on to that issue.
Well, I mean, I think, one thing I'm thinking of in particular is when we talk about hotels, and we talk about TOT, TOT, more TOT, if you look at every project on its own, you could say, okay, it's gonna generate X amount of TOT, but I think you have to look at all of them, you know, what's, to say, is this a realistic expectation? You know, are these, given the number of rooms, are these occupancy projections realistic? That's the kind of thing I'm, you know, thinking about.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to be contentious, but I went to a Santa Rosa Supervisors Meeting a few weeks ago, actually, on the day that the robbery happened in Calistoga, because I almost had trouble cutting home, but this was really up for the people who were speaking, and they were, you know, it's all the rage, is what I'm saying. I mean, this idea of addressing cumulative impacts is really happening in other counties, and I just think it's, I just thought it would be really kind of proactive and a positive thing to put in to our language, but, you know, if you don't agree, I'm not attached to it.
I do, I do see, I mean, the fact that the city can determine the scope would allow that to be flexible and project-specific, so it could, it could be expanded to include certain impacts that were, that may be considered cumulative but need to be looked at, or could be tightened depending on the individual project, so I do think the flexibility's there.
You without the language?
I do too.
As it's currently written.
Okay.
I think it's clean, I think it's very clean.
So I guess it's two against two, and one, and three?
I... I don't see the harm in adding cumulative impacts to it. I think it, it encourages the conversation to just not be just with the specific impacts of the project, but taking all into account.
So does it have to be consensus? Can it be majority?
Majority's fine.
I think it's a majority. Yeah.
So exactly what are we voting on?
Do we have to make a motion, or do we have to...
Just adding the words cumulative impacts to that section, including...
Okay, so Grace, do you want to lead it?
Sure.
So you're gonna put cumulative before the word impacts?
Measuring their impacts, including cumulative impacts. I was thinking, I mean, if you have better language, that's fine.
No, no, no.
I just thought that was simple. It just before where the red line is, yeah.
So, all in favor of adding cumulative impacts? He said up-down.
That's what it is?
Yeah.
I am.
I am.
I am.
Then...
How about if we just take their out, period, and put measuring cumulative impacts?
Well, because the other impacts aren't the same.
That'd be fine. I like economy of words.
You like that word?
So what do you suggest?
Just say measuring cumulative impacts on the community.
That's fine.
Is that, does, is that, is that skipping over anything, Noah?
Yeah.
Cumulative.
I mean, impacts and cumulative impacts are, aren't they different?
It's good, it's good.
Then we only have to insert one word and take...
That's it.
Okay.
Take one out.
If you want to.
Sorry with your person.
I voted it down, so it's the three of them deciding how they want it.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Do we need to do another vote for measuring cumulative impacts on the community? I don't think so. All right.
We're just trying to get clarity on the direction.
All right, all right, good. Let's see, we were to add here about, oh, yeah. I thought that there's a comment here about business retention, but I thought we were going to add it to ES1.b. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page five now. Five, yeah. And down on the comments, it says, "City regulation, to the extent feasible, city regulations should support, not thwart, business retention," and I thought we had wanted to put it in the ES1.b. So that was my recollection, too. I could be wrong, but I'm, it just...
I think that's the language that's under the highlighted language, that we were leaving that in, that we support the inclusion of policy language that recognizes, I think that's still staying. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I was just, we were going to put, should support business retention, that language, and I thought we were going to put that language in ES1.b, but I see it's in the comments, and...
It's right above it also, you see that?
But is that in the ES1.b?
Well, I think that's what we have to straighten out.
It's number three. What he was, I believe, not to put words in Victor's mouth, but the reason that two and, the twos are highlighted is because we did not have consensus, and the reason that three is not highlighted is we did have consensus.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood that. So that is there, under ES1.b, okay.
These two versions of number two, because we did not agree, and so you left it basically illustrating the fact there was not consensus.
That's correct, exactly.
Okay, okay, thank you, I didn't understand that. And then I also thought that...
While we're on that, can...
Oh, go ahead.
Well, we, I guess we do need clarity in what, what two is the correct two, yeah.
I don't have a problem taking those two highlighted things out, given the fact that we did send the citizens' voice letter to the council, and I'm sure they're gonna make their case. And I thought the things that we, at least that I felt strongly about, were the cost-benefit analysis and the business retention, that they weren't necessarily as tied to. I don't have a problem taking those out. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, I mean, that was...
And then on page...
Which we need to probably decide on, then, because we're asking them to put something in that we weren't in agreement, should be, we should be asking them. So can we vote to, we agree that we can now take out, or do an up-down that we can take out either version of number two, because we're not gonna add it? That's what we're voting on, right, if we vote?
So what I'm hearing is to go with the number two without the changes?
No, just not have it.
The two highlighted things would go away in their entirety.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
But what this whole thing was, was really the effort to recap recommendations for changes. So if we don't recommend the change, then we can just take it out.
But so we'd leave, we'd leave that language about the number three that's not highlighted, and we'd leave our comment.
I like that.
Yes, your comment's fine.
So that there's no distinction now about discount change?
No, just taking all that out.
So we just took that out, yeah, that's right.
Let somebody else carry that water.
Right, got you, right, exactly.
And then I was wondering, okay, I was wondering, on page six, add wording to the implementing action ES2.b. Is that where the cost-benefit analysis language should be? Because again, that was, I think, was only in the comment, so...
I'm sorry, where are you, Bobby?
I'm on page six, and I'm talking about, under ES2.b, as in boy.
The first red line?
The first thing, it says, add wording to implementing action ESb2 to prohibit visitors' serving uses, blah, blah, blah. Is that also where the language about cost-benefit analysis should be?
No, I...
No, I think we've got...
Where is it? Because it was only a comment.
We already said it would go in ES3.e.
Where is it?
We just said...
It's ES specified.
Because I only saw it as a comment.
This was a whole different thing. This was the response to people putting businesses in neighborhoods.
Okay, so then, well, I mean, that's exactly where I think, I mean, that is certainly appropriate for that, you know?
I think it's broader where you have it before, you're basically...
But is it, where is it before? Because I just saw...
As we just discussed, it's on page four, in ES3.e.
Right.
That's correct.
So it's under the economic.
Which is the broad topic that this all flows into.
So it's more than a comment? I mean, because I just saw it as a comment, I was wondering...
No, it's not, it's not a comment because it has the policy number in front of it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
It's on the bottom of page four, Bobby.
I, yeah, that's my page.
Yeah, you commented on it, you wanted it in there.
Oh, that was the one with cumulative impact?
You just added cumulative to it. There's cost benefit right there. It's the paragraph you just added cumulative benefit to, or cumulative cost, or impact.
Oh, and that's where it continues. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't have a brain.
It's all right, it's okay.
Okay, and then I just had a question. On this one, about, on page six, clarify policy, well, let's see, about, no, about the agricultural use, you know, and it was changed to be if it's zone agriculture, and they took out or used as agriculture.
Right.
I'm wondering if, can an owner whose zoning is not agriculture, but is being used as agriculture, can that owner request a rezoning to ag, which would not be a... can that owner request a rezoning to ag which would not, would not be a taking in this town?
I, I mean, if they're requesting it, I think that's fine. So, I mean.
So they could if they wanted to. Is that accurate?
If they wanted to request it, sure.
Okay, all right. So it's not taking away the possibility of that happening?
No, no.
All right, thanks.
I have a question on the top of the page. I didn't bring my plan with me. There's an insert there that we're recommending. Page six, the insert that we're recommending that E S two point three be left in its present form. What is E S two point three?
Look real quick here.
I thought you'd know this off the top of your head.
Here it is.
It is ensure diverse mix of uses that have.
Ensure a diverse mix of uses that avoids an overrepresentation of any particular use. Remove the cap on the number of hotels and motel rooms and restaurant seats, but continue to limit vacation rentals. That is E S two point three.
I thought we were going to establish reasonable and flexible, but I guess we didn't.
What were you going to say about that?
You just want to know what it was?
Well, I think at one point we discussed caps. I just, I didn't just, I didn't remember us specifically focusing on this, but.
Yeah, I thought we were going to add, because I have in my notes that we were going to add, consider reasonable and flexible caps.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. That's what I wanted to add, I guess.
Yeah, we went away from that.
Okay.
We went away from the caps on both.
It ran hard, Bobby. And again, it was all about only put it in if we're talking about the change.
And my only comment about these last three things is they should get folded into the appropriate chapters where they belong, you know, just.
Good point. You'll, I'll find a good home for them.
Yeah, because we're trying to keep this kind of in the order that it goes.
Right, right.
And I assume, I mean, if we have something we're satisfied with after we get our final comments on the plan and everything else, we may add something more to this or not, or this isn't the end of it.
It's never ending. No, it's nev- don't worry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, you're going to give no anxiety.
I would assume we'll have one more shot at it, right? You can give us one more shot at it.
All right.
At least.
About happy May Day next year.
I had just one comment my up next.
Go ahead, Karen.
And I missed this first round.
They're laughing more and more.
We had, this is on page three and it was an insertion that was proposed under wineries D. And you're underlined, which is what the commission, what was presumed to be the consensus, is part of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update following adoption of the general plan, which is, Bobby, which we agreed wanted to go up and update. Distinct functions and uses accessory to wineries, then parentheses, events that are production facilities, tasting rooms, for example. I, I don't agree with how that's written. Production is, is the distinct function. It should not be considered an accessory use. The term event center is something that I don't agree with. It should be marketing events. Event center is, is more of a code that's come out and defined and tried to externally define what's going on, but wineries and, wineries are not event centers. So I would recommend to say distinct, because the whole point of this is that we should evaluate what uses, what accessory uses are approved for each winery based on what zone it's being considered in, which I'm fine with. But I want this to read, or prefer this to read, distinct functions, the distinct function of, of production and accessory uses, including tasting rooms and marketing events. Simplifies it. It's more consistent with what's real and it doesn't constantly, you know, kind of drum up what I believe are other intentions. Yes, I do like the separation of production facilities aren't an accessory use. The winery could be just a production facility. That is the distinct function, so it should say, you know, distinct function of production and accessory uses, including tasting rooms and mark, for example, tasting rooms and marketing events, for example. I don't think you need for example, but you could.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I like that wording.
I just wanted to be sure we got all in there so that we had.
Yeah.
What is a marketing event as opposed to an event center?
Marketing events, they're very different. An event center is, is the impression that the building itself is used for events constantly and that becomes, which, marketing events are bringing in wholesalers and doing a wine education of your current release, which many wineries will be doing this fall when they release their Cabernets. So it's a whole different thing.
So you invite all your subscribers for an event or something?
Yeah, a wine club event. But the, the concept of event center is, I, has come up through many of these letters and it's, I think it's a broader issue and it's something that is not really, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it being in this line. I think it, it's sort of slipping in something that is a problem. So I would rather be, if it's representing us, say that, you know, distinct function of production and accessory uses such as tasting rooms and marketing events. But event center is not an accessory use. It's an, it's a whole nother building. It's saying that the winery is an event center. It's not really.
I think there's a concern that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think what we're trying to get to is eliminating the number of events that some of the wineries have. I think that we need to get that in there.
But that all gets into the constitute of marketing events. An event center, what this is saying is the winery itself is an event center.
I agree with, with, with what you're saying about centers.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, that could be, that, that could be down on Adams Street as a, as a community center, could be an event center. But, but I think what we're trying to say is in which of the districts can we actually have winery events?
Marketing events, right. And that's what, you just leave it at that.
Oh, I think we should have.
No, I think that what she's saying is that they're, that event centers are not accessory uses. Yeah, no, they're not.
From a staff side, I, I think it's an important distinction because event centers could be interpreted very broadly, so.
We don't want that in your place of wedding.
I mean, arguably Oracle Arena is, you know, an event center.
And it has a whole constitution and, you know, it's implying something very different than what the purpose of this is. A winery is a, is a place to make wine with accessory uses that need.
Right, so if we're looking for control, I think it's a very important distinction. It's a good point.
I would be in favor of just taking out the words accessory to wineries because we did have a lot of discussion about event centers and who knows what we're going to allow in the future or not allow. And I, when I think of a winery, I don't think of production as just the distinct function. A lot of times the production seems to be happening somewhere else.
Well, that's why.
But then it's not a winery anymore.
Pardon me?
But then it's not.
That's why we separated them out, I think. Because you can have.
You can have the winery or you can just have a, you can have the production or you can have the place where everybody comes and.
The central business district, you can have a production center, but you shouldn't have a winery.
But we're talking about wineries. And so what makes something a winery and not an event center or not just a tasting room is production, right? And so we're talking about, and where this sort of originated was, is that putting in wineries, true wineries, in neighborhoods or in commercial districts or in wherever, and to, the way this is written.
It's the way it's written.
Yeah.
The context, I think everybody understands, is the way it's written.
Yeah, limiting the number of events you can have at your production facility is perfectly fine for your winery.
Well, how about at your facility that's not where you produce the wine?
But that's not what we're talking about here.
Well, I think if we just take out the, if we just say distinct functions and uses and then take out accessory to wineries.
Then, then scratch all those uses names. What I don't want to see is that this word event center tied to wineries.
I think it was a major thing that we talked about.
I, I think, well, so this is under the winery section. So, so I think that's getting to some of what Mr. Sweeney's saying, whereas.
Wineries don't use the term event center. People opposed to events in public places use the term event center. I just want the term event center struck. I'm perfectly comfortable saying that we limit the uses.
Well, some wineries are, we, they, they perform like event centers at times.
But they're not called, they're not called, I mean, that's an external name moniker that's been put on wineries and that is not, wineries make wine. So if we're going to talk about not having event centers in neighborhoods, that's perfectly fine, but that should be completely separated from the, the context of a winery. A winery's distinct use is production of wine. There are accessory uses.
How about if we take the word centers out and we just say events?
Yeah, totally good with that.
How about that?
Totally good with that.
Yes, okay.
Does that?
Yeah.
But production shouldn't be considered an accessory use.
Right, right.
Right, well, how about if we take out accessory to wineries and then we just, in the parenthetical, it says events, production facilities, tasting rooms, for example.
I'm still saying put production over here because that is a distinct use. That's what makes it a winery, the production.
Well, not production facility. So that the production facility.
I, I think of it as a distinct function.
Events or tasting rooms?
Right, that's what we're saying.
Distinct functions and uses such as production facilities, events, tasting rooms.
But that's not an accessory. That's not an accessory.
You're reading that product, functions and uses.
And then what's in the parenthetical is.
Both, okay.
Functions and uses.
What I'm hearing is define every element or all elements of, of winery operations.
That's correct.
To clarify.
Yeah, but take away center, the word center. Events, marketing events, we're going to call them customer events.
Yes, whatever.
But just no center. Take the word center out.
We should probably open it to public comment.
No.
No. This is our net. This is our letter. We've already done that.
Absolutely not. This has been done.
This isn't a study session. This is just a recap.
To prepare to get ready to approve the general plan.
Okay, so the, so it's the, the item is not.
This is not a study session for the, for the community.
This is agreeing on what we all already discussed.
Okay, I get it, but I just didn't know there could be no public comment.
Because then they're becoming on our own.
That's why I said what I did when we started.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And Bobby, just the reasoning behind that is we're not welcoming, we're not opening to comment about our own interpretation of what we said.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
We need to clarify what we said. The public doesn't clarify what we said.
So is it okay if we strike the words accessory to wineries and then in the parenthetical, you strike the word center, but it says events?
Yes. So you're saying.
Good solution.
We're talking about functions and uses related to wineries and these are some examples. Events, production facilities, tasting rooms.
And maybe you get facilities away to say production then. Events, production and.
Yeah, and tasting rooms, yes.
And tasting rooms. Unless, I don't know if that's getting too granular, but.
Because you could have some in all areas of the town, not all, but some.
Yeah, because that's really what happens next. Then you say, okay, all the zones.
I think that's what we're trying to get to. What can you have and what, what can you ride in which district?
Put where? Right, exactly.
Okay, so just.
You, you have the suggested changes?
I believe so.
Do you want?
Here, we take out the words accessory to wineries.
Insane such as.
No, just distinct functions and uses, then strike the words accessory to wineries. And in the parenthetical, it should be events plural, strike the word centers. That's it.
And then production.
Just production.
And tasting room. You can even take rid of for example, right?
No facilities.
Yeah, we can take that.
I think we should leave for example because.
Is the idea that that is supposed to cover the totality of all that's going to happen?
That's why the words for example have to stay in there.
Mary makes a good point.
But these are some of the things, you know.
Okay, as long as for example's in there, then I think it works.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. So you've taken out center, you've taken accessory to wineries.
And we've made events plural and taken up, yeah.
Okay, good.
Is that okay with everybody?
Or it works for me.
I think it's wonderful. I've never been so happy. Because that's the one.
And you took out facilities, right? You just left it production because that is a.
I was going to leave it in there. It, I mean, production, it has a place, right, a facility.
Okay.
Doesn't it? It has buildings, it has, you know, I don't know.
I, I just think.
You know, whatever.
Yeah, and that's why I'm weighing in here, is that production, you could even take tasting room, rooms away and just say, these are, because you're talking about activities. So events are an activity, productions an activity, and tastings an activity. And then I think you're consistent for example, leaving your for example.
I'm talking about buildings.
Uses, so accessory to wineries, scratch that. Events plural, center, scratch. Production, leave, because it is, doesn't need to be plural. Facilities, scratch. Rooms, scratch. And then leave for example. Because then you can add other things later.
I mean, but based on I'm reading, as I read the revised wording, one could then determine a tasting room to be a winery, given the way we've kind of limited what.
So then leave, you should leave in accessory to wineries.
I, I think that helps.
Okay. But then production should be over a distinct function. That's where you're starting. That's the starting goal.
Victor, would you read, would you read it the way you, the way you see it, please?
Well, then you need to take production out of there.
Let me, just, okay, as part of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update following adoption of the general plan, distinct functions and uses accessory to wineries. So I would leave that in. And then you could say such as or for example, events, tasting rooms, or such as events and tasting rooms.
Maybe just.
To me, that, that covers it and it's broad enough. It, it just seems going the other way. It, it, arguably, then, then.
You're putting for example at the beginning, right? You did put for example at the beginning instead of the end.
Right, right.
But then, and if you're going to take production out of there, I think, don't you want, I mean, you did, I think you wanted to, Tracy. It would read, following adoption of the general plan, distinct functions of production and uses accessory to wineries, events, tasting rooms. But didn't you want to put productions after functions?
Read it the way that, by taking it out, I think, what Victor's implying is the distinct function of wineries, that's just implied.
Wineries are production.
Except there can be a production, there can be a production facility in some areas in town that you, you don't have winery.
No, that I understand, but the way it's written, one could define a winery then conversely as a tasting room, even if it doesn't have production. And it's not.
Yeah, I mean, we feel that's the foundation, that to be a winery, you have to make wine there. And then everything else is accessory to that.
Yeah, I, I think kind of making a mountain out of a molehill, but here, but.
It says the basics and accessories and then it says in parentheses.
Well, I'm, that's semantics. I would leave that to Victor.
It should start with production because production is the basic and then the ands are the other two. So maybe that's what's confusing.
I don't think we should assume that everybody is this. I mean, I, I thought this was sort of like every man's language when they think about wineries and what, what they might be.
Then I'm good with it.
It might be the production facility. It might be the place you go and where they're not actually making the wine, but they have a big facility and it's not producing wine.
Yeah, I'm just anticipating a type situation like Sutter Home where they make, the production is across the street, but the tasting room is, you know, on the other side of, of Highway, of Highway twenty nine or Main Street, wherever, part of St. Helena you're in. Just, and like there's, sometimes there's separate buildings and they're in different venues.
I, I think what we're trying to get at here, I don't want to lose.
And I know that when, I'm sorry, I just know that when Citizens Voice was here, like the definition, the distinction between production facility and wineries was something that she brought up that I actually could get on board with because you could limit thinking a little bit ahead, which is what I think we're supposed to do with this, is that production facilities could be allowed in certain zones in St. Helena, but not wineries. And I think that's why we need to distinguish between the two. That's fine. I'm good with it then, just.
What's the difference between a production?
So. No visitors. Yeah.
And a winery has visitors?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Okay.
And it just kind of makes it clean and easy and appropriate in a more industrial area. And that's kind of why the accessory use is tasting rooms.
Put visitors in, no visitors if this is done.
But tasting rooms are where the visitors fall. I'm sorry, Victor, you look like you want to kill us.
No, no, no.
I just, I just don't know where exactly to place it.
Well, if you.
So I'm good with not changing, other than changing event centers to events and I think what Mary said is accessory to wineries. Take that out. You don't need that, right? Or, or does Victor say you need it?
Right, because, you know, and then you tend to think about the ordinance as it is now and it talks about a winery and it talks about accessory uses and that may not be the way it comes out in the wash. The idea here is there are these different functions and things that happen related to wineries. Whether it's growing the grapes or doing the production or whatever, and we want to address them all in the context of determining what zoning districts they are appropriated.
And could we, can we get ahead of ourselves and put at the, at the end of the sentence where it says, to each land district in which wineries are allowed as a permitted or conditional use permit use, could we add wineries and production facilities there even though we haven't yet defined productions facilities? Is that something that we could do?
Well, I think if you're going to, if you really want people.
Because I feel like, I feel like production facilities is going to become.
Let's not talk over each other.
No, I thought she was done.
Something part of the zoning, because.
The reality is that the zoning is going to have other categories like tasting rooms. I, I guess this just seems to be getting, and, and the whole idea of this is to, to regulate wineries. I guess in my head, I pictured wineries is, as having the production and then they have ancillary uses. If they don't have production, then it's a tasting room.
Right.
Or something else. But if, if we divine, if we define this, so in effect, one could interpret a tasting room to be a winery because if you take out the, uses accessory to wineries and define wineries as tasting rooms, then so at any rate, I think we'll have other land use categories or, or land use types in addition to wineries that'll capture other aspects of things that'll be either use permit or prohibited. The, the idea of this one was to capture wineries and that the idea in different zones, in some zones, you may have wineries where you allow tasting rooms, in some zones you might, but if we're not even saying production is part of it, then. But if we're not even saying production is part of it, um, then, then it seems like it's kind of almost pointless.
That was kind of my reason for bringing up in the, of moving production to distinct functions is that I didn't see that as an accessory use. And so the way it was laid out in this sentence, it said it was. So that's why I just didn't want it to be an accessory use and the accessory uses that are for example, I think.
And, and I, I agree with that. I think that makes sense. And I think curing the event center thing is a problem because Oracle Arena's arguably an event center. So I think if you do those two, combined with the fact that we do have other definitions of use types like tasting rooms, then we're fine. Because the whole idea of this is to allow customized definition of wineries to, to fit different areas. Some of those may allow tasting rooms, some might not, but, um, production, I think, has to, is, has to be inherent with what a winery is. And if it's not, then it becomes something else.
You could have a production facility without actually having the winery there.
Well, no.
No, it would still be part of, it would be a winery without visitors.
A winery is not, a tasting room is not a winery.
Yeah.
I think that should be defined here.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm, I'm talking about these facilities that do nothing except wine reproduction where people take the grapes to be, to, to be.
Well, that's crushing, yes, but I think that.
What's a winery?
No, it's not a winery.
It's, it's, it's.
I mean, it's a production se, uh, center.
Under land use, that's a custom crush facility is, is one, one terminology or a, or a production facility where wine is made, but people don't go there to taste or buy the wine.
Exactly.
That should be in the sentence.
And they don't have to be grapes there.
Exactly. It's essentially an industrial production use.
That's what I needed to say.
So you could easily say that.
So I, I think we're overcomplicating.
We're, we're trying to regulate the sum total of possible uses that involve wine in this one definite, in this one description of winery, when in the code, there's all kinds of, Noah just alludes to, different land use types. So I, my, my understanding was the intent of this was to get at the issue that wineries, which inherently involve production, may or may not have different kinds of accessory uses depending on the zone. And we would tailor essentially what's allowed in a winery to those zones and that's what this wording gets at. And then we have other controls to regulate aspects of you, other wine-related uses, whether it's the, the kind of pure, um, production or the crush or whatever it is, or wine tasting or, or, you know, something in between.
Well, but I'm, okay, Victor, my, my, I mean, maybe this would, this is what it seems like to me. The syntax is just a little off because you have here distinct functions and uses, uses accessory to wineries. Then you have a parenthesis. So the first thing in the parenthesis should be the distinct function, which is production. And then the rest, you know, and then the rest of the things in the parenthesis should be the accessories to be consistent with how you worded it, the syntax of the, of the sentence. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, because I, the parenthetical is supposed to be the such as.
Mm-hmm.
And if you say production is such as, then you're chasing your tail again in terms of trying to regulate this stuff.
Well, is it such as for, this, and, and this is the question, is it such as for distinct functions and uses accessory to wineries? Or is it only such, uh, such as for accessory to wineries?
The and breaks it.
See, well, that's what I'm saying. You could have the and in, that's my question.
Can I ask one question of Victor?
Is this such as?
I got confused.
Well, wait, can I get an answer to that? Is this such as for both of those distinct functions and uses accessory to wineries? Is that what's supposed to be in the parenthesis? Or just, uh, such, such as for the accessories?
I mean, I would read it as the accessory uses because those are the things that you might not have, um, you know, that can vary between wine and, and winery. You almost don't even need the word distinct function in there if you're assuming the winery is production.
Okay, so then in that case, production should come out of the parenthesis.
Yes.
You could have it either way, but if, if that's your meaning.
That's where you got to this. That's where you got to, right?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, so, so I think we're on the same page. Production is the core, it comes out of the parentheses.
Right, then we're fine.
Accessory uses or events and tasting rooms, for example, which then allows other things down the road, right? Yes.
Okay.
You leave it for example.
So I need you to bring this into the real world for me. What is the Behringer facility on 29? What would you call that?
There's two facilities on 29, depending what you, so we are a winery.
Okay, the big house.
The big house is a tasting.
And what would you call that?
It's a tasting room. It's a tasting room in a retail store. And the winery facility, the production facility is at, on Proud Avenue.
But they have events in that tasting room facility.
And we're permitted to have marketing events, but that's not an event center.
Just marketing events, not other kind of events like weddings or anything?
No. Well, that, that Hudson House, there's a, there's a building on there that is permitted to have winery, that's permitted to have, uh, 12 weddings a year.
Okay, so it's, so it sounds like Behringer is an event center, a tasting room and a production.
But it's not an event center.
It's not an event center.
Events are permitted use.
Room can have events, so we're not gonna call it an event center, you know?
We don't. It's a permitted use among, we call it a tasting room and we call it a kitchen and we call it. It's, it's not an event center.
If you have 12 weddings a year, that's 12 events a year.
It's pretty tiny. But this is, that's.
Well, maybe so, but.
I think you're getting into semantics, but back to Mary's question is on Proud Avenue across the street is the winery.
Is the production.
We refer to the winery as Proud Avenue.
Okay, so.
Call it Proud Avenue Winery.
Is that perfectly clear, Mary? Pardon me, I, I'm just trying to find better language because if we had bad language to begin with, trying to make it.
And that's pretty typical of wineries though, is that, I know that, like a Joseph Phelps, there is the tasting room and where the office is, and then there's the production facility that's hidden behind the hill. And there's places like Corazon that it's all. In the same building. It's all in the same place. The tasting table is literally where they.